Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 14th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nomura?
Here.
Vice Mayor Solarsino?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Alacron?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll now move on to Introductions, Proclamations, and Presentations. The first one is a proclamation designating April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Carpinteria. I will now go ahead and open up public comment. Seeing none, anyone? Yes, Mr. Delgado? Uh, Fair Housing Month, yes.
Thank you, Rogelio Delgado, Carpinteria resident for many, many years. And I read the Fair Housing notice, it caught my attention, and this is the opportunity for me to share my knowledge and the experiences that people have faced, okay? First of all, on every real estate office, the law is that, it says that there has to be a Fair Housing poster, it's the law. Now, let me tell you, we all know that the last year, the National Association of Realtors settled to pay $418 million because they were found guilty of manipulating prices. And as a result, this is fair to buyers, to sellers, that since last year, the seller has to pay only a commission only to the listing agent, nothing to the buyer's agent. That's the law. Unless the seller agrees to pay, let's say, 2%, 1%, but the law says nothing. And another thing is that this is to protect the fair lending, the fair housing principles, I would say. I have, I have had people come to me, lost my house, not 10 years ago, not 16 years ago, last year. Well, why? Well, the loan. Wasn't it, I thought it was a 30-year fix, it was not. After four years, it was a balloon payment of $28,000, so I had, I had not working, I have three jobs not only work for that money, but also to, uh, to keep up loads, so be careful with, uh, I may go over, 10 seconds. Be careful with, uh, also with the loan prepayment penalties. Even if you have a 700 score, FICO score, you watch your Expro final paperwork because it may say that you have a prepayment penalty. That means that the loan officer gets an extra $40,000 in commission, and you, as a seller, when you sell or refinance, you end up paying 50 grand. So, watch out, be careful to buyers, to sellers.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Delgado. Do we have any public comment speakers on Zoom?
Mayor, we do not.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Now, we'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll move to designate April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Carpinteria.
Second, then.
We have a first and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. We will go ahead and read the proclamation, we can start with Councilmember Mayor.
Whereas April is National Fair Housing Month, marking the 57th anniversary of the passage of the Federal Fair Housing Act on April 11th, 1968. The enactment of this act as expanded prohibits discrimination concerning the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status, and disability, and?
Whereas during the month of April, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and Fair Housing Advocates will participate in a national effort to promote fair housing with the theme "Fair Housing, Together We Can," and?
Whereas the city of Carpinteria has demonstrated its commitment to advancing equity in housing by partnering with the city of Santa Barbara's Rental Housing Mediation Program for the past 18 years, providing education, eviction prevention, and mediation services that have successfully resolved rental housing disputes out of court, thereby helping prevent homelessness, and?
Whereas according to the 2024 Fair Housing Trends Report, despite the local, state, and federal laws prohibiting discrimination, 34,150 fair housing complaints were filed in 2023, the most ever in a single year, alleging discrimination based on one or more of the Fair Housing Act's seven protected classes, and?
Whereas part of the city's participation in National Fair Housing Month, the city will post a notice on its website directing residents to information about fair housing and the services provided by the Rental Housing Mediation Program.
Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Carpinteria does hereby proclaim April 2025 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Carpinteria, and urges residents to understand and exercise their right to equal housing opportunity. I'd now like to invite Andrea Bafano from the Rental Housing Mediation Services to say a few words.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Alacron, and distinguished city council members for this very important proclamation. I'm Andrea Bafano, Rental Housing Mediation Program Supervisor. It's an honor for me to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Rental Housing Mediation Program. Standing in support of this proclamation here today are Rental Housing Mediation Specialist Raymond Rango and Diana Santiago from the city of Santa Barbara, and Mindy Fogg, Principal Planner, and Nick Bobrov, Director of Community Development, city of Carpinteria. It is very important as a community to celebrate and recognize National Fair Housing Month and the Fair Housing Act. Fifty-seven years after the passage of the Act, discrimination in housing is still prevalent and continues to be reported at the highest numbers ever. This fact substantiates the continued need for the promotion of equal opportunity and access to housing for all. The Housing and Urban Development's theme this year is "Fair Housing, Together We Can." Together we can make change through awareness and education. For change to occur at every level within our society, it needs to begin here, within our local community, and that is our purpose here today. The city of Carpinteria partners with the city of Santa Barbara for the Rental Housing Mediation Program Services, which includes a provision of landlord-tenant information on rights and responsibilities and mediation services. The program services are available to the residents of the city of Carpinteria at no charge. You can reach the Rental Housing Mediation Program at 805-564-5420. I have brought informational flyers and brochures to be distributed and posted for access to the residents. Thank you very much. And again, I have Raymond Rango and Diana Santiago, our bilingual staff here, thank you.
Thank you. Yay. We'd love to present this proclamation to you and take a photo in the front. Okay, moving on to item number two, which is a proclamation designating the week of April 21st through the 28th, 2025, as International Dark Sky Week in the city of Carpinteria. I will go ahead and open up public comment. I don't have any speaker slips, anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Here, we have no raised hands.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I move to designate the week of April 21st through April 28th, 2025, as International Dark Sky Week in the city of Carpinteria.
Second.
We have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We will go ahead and read the proclamation, and we'll start with Councilmember Mayor.
Whereas the beauty and wonder of a star-filled night sky are the shared heritage of all humankind, and the natural beauty of Carpinteria, including its starry skies, is cherished by residents and visitors alike, and?
Whereas the experience of standing beneath a starry night sky inspires feelings of wonder and awe, and fosters a growing interest in science and nature, especially among young people within the Carpinteria community, and?
Whereas light pollution not only diminishes our ability to see stars, but also has well-documented economic and environmental consequences that significantly impact ecosystems and human health, including in Carpinteria, and?
Whereas light pollution results in the waste of natural resources, amounting to roughly $3 billion per year in lost energy in the United States, and also contributes to reduced energy security, and?
Whereas Carpinteria's natural areas are impacted by light pollution, which disrupts nocturnal wildlife and degrades ecosystem's health, particularly in sensitive local habitats such as the salt marsh, carpenteria bluffs, local creeks, and nearby foothills, and?
Whereas reducing light pollution involves using outdoor lighting more effectively, directing light downward when needed, and using it only when and where necessary, and?
Whereas Dark Sky International, the globally recognized authority on light pollution, sponsors International Dark Sky Week to raise awareness of its effects, provide educational resources and practical solutions, and promote the enjoyment and protection of dark skies, and?
Whereas the city's general plan, Local Coastal Land Use Plan, includes policies to ensure that lighting from new development minimizes light pollution and limits impacts to environmentally sensitive habitat areas, and?
Whereas the city's general plan, Local Coastal Land Use Plan, also encourages the establishment of a night sky ordinance to provide standards for reducing direct and ambient light pollution.
Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Carpinteria does hereby proclaim the week of April 21st through the 8th as International Dark Sky Week. And I'd now like to ask Mike Wondolowski from the Carpenter Valley Association to accept the proclamation.
If it's okay, I'd like to invite the members of the other sponsor groups to come up and stand with me and make comments, so come on if you guys. On behalf, I'm Mike Wondolowski of the Carpenter Valley Association. I'm here on behalf of six groups from across the county to thank you for issuing this proclamations, this proclamation. The groups are the Santa Barbara Astronomical Unit, represented by Chuck and Pat McPartland, Santa Barbara Museum of Natural History, represented by Luke Swetland, Santa Barbara Audubon Society, WeWatch, Dark Sky International Central Coast Chapter, and Carpenter Valley Association, and we have some other of our board members here also. We're here to thank the city for its ongoing recognition of the value of a dark sky. The benefit is not only to allow us to experience the joy of seeing the Milky Way and constellations, but as the proclamation says, for the health of ecosystems and people. Dark skies are impacted by light pollution. I've said this before, but it's the rare type of pollution that can be ended immediately by just turning off the light or pointing it down where it belongs and does some good. As soon as you do that, the pollution's gone. We look forward to working with the city to establish a night sky ordinance to better protect our dark skies. As the proclamation recognizes, our existing general plan includes a policy calling for just such an ordinance, a policy that's been in place since this general plan was put in place 22 years ago, and nothing has happened in that time. The county recently updated their outdoor lighting ordinances that apply in the unincorporated areas of the whole county, a multi-year effort spearheaded by WeWatch and supported by CVA. Now, the county has a very strong outdoor lighting ordinance set. It's an excellent starting point for the city to build on for its ordinance. The time to get started is now. There is tremendous expertise available from the groups represented here tonight, and we make ourselves available to the city and city staff to help along with this effort however we can. It's completely feasible to expect, on a moonless night, to step out of city hall or anywhere in the city, even near the most developed parts of town, and look up and see the Milky Way spilling across the sky. So we join the city, as the proclamation says, in urging residents to learn about night sky-friendly lighting, to implement practices and improvements that will reduce light pollution, and, once in a while, to step outside in the evening, look up, and experience the wonder of a star-filled night. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'd love to hand this proclamation over to you and take a photo with all the members.
Thank you, good job, Mike.
Thank you, thanks for coming in. Okay, we will now move on to agenda item number three, which is a proclamation celebrating the 60th, 66th anniversary of the Carpenter Community Awards Banquet. I will go ahead and open up public comment. I don't see, I don't have any slips, anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I move to celebrate the 66th anniversary of the Carpenter Community Awards Banquet.
Second.
Great, we have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, so we will go ahead and read the proclamation, if we can start with Councilmember Mayor.
Whereas the first Carpenteria Community Awards Banquet was held in 1958 and was called "The Man of the Year" event, and after several name changes over the years, it is now known as the Annual Carpenteria Community Awards Banquet, and?
Whereas a recently formed Carpenteria Community Association, a local nonprofit organization, now hosts the annual event for the sole purpose of celebrating people and businesses of Carpenteria for their various efforts, deeds, and accomplishments, and?
Whereas this event provides an opportunity for many local service organizations, nonprofits, and others to publicly recognize and honor their volunteers with mayor awards, and?
Whereas Ropatized Fine Candies is being honored for their many years of business in downtown Carpenteria, where they received the first Outstanding Business Award in 1990, to today, receiving their outstanding local business award as Ropatized retire from business, and?
Whereas there's a special spotlight on local business awards for two local business families, each of whom runs three local stores. They are Ben and Carrie Mascari family, and Zach and Mary Fayad Ballot family, and?
Whereas two teachers from our local schools are chosen to receive an Educator of the Year Award, and three local high school seniors are selected as finalists for the Junior Carpenterian of the Year Award, which includes generous scholarship money provided by the community businesses and members, and?
Whereas the Carpenteria City Council selected Ted Rhodes as a Volunteer of the Year, a merit award for the city, and?
Whereas the final highlight of the evening is the announcement of the Carpenterian of the Year for 2024. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Carpenteria congratulates the Carpenteria Community Awards Banquet on its 66th anniversary, and commends the Carpenteria Community Association for its commitment to honor the spirit of Carpenteria.
So I'd like to invite members of Carpenteria city association, excellent.
Mayor Alacron and council members, thank you, thank you for, um, for the proclamation. We are extremely honored and we feel privileged, um, as a organization to host this event. And with me today, I have some of our board members. We have here Curtis Lopez, Beth Cox, Donald Lamir, Bob Burkenmeyer, Clyde Freeman, and last but not least, he's hiding, Gary Dobbins, and you all know him. And we do have some others, Pam Warner and Shelley, no, she's retired, Marianne Coulson and? And Neil Bartlett, so there's three that unfortunately couldn't make it. And when we developed our nonprofit, we had, our inspiration was actually to take on and host the Carpenter Awards Banquet, because that, as you can tell, 66 years is a long time, and we wanted to keep that intact in our community. So we feel very honored that we can keep that tradition going. And it is our 66th year, so that's amazing, and we have a great event planned. And I will add one thing, that, you know, as you mentioned, the highlight of the night is to honor the Carpenter of the Year, and believe it or not, we have a few in our presence here. We have one up there with you, with Wade, we have Curtis, we have Beth, Donna, and we have Bob and Clyde, and me. And so we're, um, very, we feel very fortunate, we're feeling really great to be able to give back as well. So our event is on April 26th at 5:30 at Girls Inc. We have tickets and room available, and we really want to encourage the community to come out to this because it is exactly what you said in the proclamation, a celebration of our community. So many ways that we honor through merits and different distinctions, and we're just really excited about that. So to get tickets, it's carpca.org, and you can buy them right online. Anybody want to add anything? Okay, thank you again for the honor and the proclamation, and we'll see you all there.
Excellent. I'd like to ask you all to join us for a photo in the front.
Yes, you got us all.
Come on up, come on up.
You know it back there.
Thank you, sir. Anytime.
All right, there's one phone, hold tight. And lovely smiles, all done. Thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is Santa Barbara Metropolitan Transit District Update Presentation by Jerry Estrada, General Manager of Santa Barbara MTD. Welcome, Jerry.
Mayor Alacron, councilmembers, good evening. I'm Jerry Estrada, General Manager, Santa Barbara MTD, that'll help. And with me today is Hillary Blackerby, our Planning and Marketing Manager. Ask any of the real detailed, answer any of the real detailed questions. Give you a quick update, I know you have a busy agenda today. First of all, I want to talk during today's opportunity, this evening's opportunity, give you a ridership update from MTD, but also give you just a few action items. Our board recently updated a strategic plan, and there's some items that I felt are really, you know, pertinent, and I wanted to share what we'll be doing going forward as a result of that. So the first slide has to do with ridership. And we went back to 2018, 19, obviously pre-pandemic, and at that point, MTD had 6.4 million rides during that fiscal year. For a community, or essentially the South Coast of Santa Barbara, that's really extraordinary, the ridership level of 6.4 on a per capita basis, it's one of the best in the country, frankly. I mean, there are statistics federally, and for a community our size, we always hit all the metrics by the Federal Transit Administration. And as you can see, over the years, we've recovered to a certain extent, we're at 4.6 million rides as of 2324, fiscal year 2324, but we have not been able to restore all the service. And I'll get into, in my very last slide, I'll really kind of bring that home for you to show you what's been our biggest challenge in restoring all the service. As you know, COVID funds are made available for public transit. We are relying on those, I'll also discuss that a little bit more detail, to keep the service levels that we have. The other item on there that I really wanted to highlight, because there's another line going through there, which shows you the average passengers per revenue hour. And back in 1819, we were at 29.3, we are now at 27.3. So we're pretty close as far as what we were pre-pandemic. Again, we just haven't been able to restore all the service. But one of the last things on this graph before I move ahead is that 202021, that was really during the shelter-in-place period of the pandemic, and even still, at that point in the South Coast, we had 2.3 million rides. And that shocks a lot of people, and there are that many people were, were still riding the bus. We were even limiting how many people could ride in a 40-foot bus. It gives you an idea of our ridership. A lot of the students, the seniors, disabled were sheltering in place, but we have a lot of essential workers that rely on public transit on the South Coast. And the line that really pertains to Carpenteria and those workers is Line 20, and this is from fiscal year 21, that, that year. And what you see for the first time in maybe the history of MTD, Line 20 actually made the top five lines in the South County, and that's how dependent we are on a lot of the workers. That line connects Carpenteria, Summerlin, Montecito, and Santa Barbara. And it's a really important piece of service, parallel to the 101, and this really, I think, that year highlighted its importance. Couple other graphs, one shows you the average ridership per revenue hour for just the Line 20. It was just under 20 riders per hour, we're up to about 18.4 now, and then that gives you the total ridership each year, as you can see, it's been coming back on the Line 20, even though we haven't been able to restore all of the service to the Line 20. Another service that we provide here to Carpenteria, that we started with the help of Caltrans and SB CAG and the 101 funding, it's a, you know, it's not funded permanently, but during the construction project, is a 19X, which connects Carpenteria to Santa Barbara City College. So it's more direct service, and really proud of it, and encouraging folks to, you know, the students to take advantage of that opportunity. From the strategic plan perspective, a couple of items that I think are really important to the South Coast and Carpenteria. The first one is MTD's progress towards the zero emission bus rollout plan, and that's a mandate, state mandate, that we have our entire fleet be zero emission by 2040. And we've made really good progress, I'll get into that in the next slide. And then finally, our Terminal 2 Operations and Maintenance Facility, that's, we have our main facilities in downtown Santa Barbara, but we've really outgrown that, so we're recommissioning an old site out in Galita. But it's, it's critical that we have that, so that we're able to serve the entire South Coast, and I'll get through that quickly. The fleet status, where we are right now, is, we have an active fleet of about 100 vehicles. are right now is we, we have an active fleet of about 100 vehicles. That's 100 buses that are in operation. Includes three 60 footers that serve UCSB. Um, 40 footers are primarily the majority of the fleet. There's also some 29 footers. Of that fleet, currently, 40% of it is alternative fuel. 23% is zero emission buses. 17% are hybrid buses, and the other 60% are working on renewable diesel, operate on renewable diesel. And we serve over 2 million revenue miles a year as well. And one of the other pieces of good news, they're working again with SB CAG and Caltrans. We were awarded funding for the solutions through congested corridors to, uh, essentially purchase additional battery electric buses so we can electrify the Line 20. Those buses are scheduled to start arriving in about a year and a half. So that, what you see there at 6040, you know, um, renewable diesel to alternative fuel will actually flip because we have 16, uh, battery electric buses on order. That's why we, another reason why we need that Galida facility so important, we had to build out the infrastructure. So we're in progress of doing that. We received some grant awards to do just that. That project where it stands right now, that's the recommissioning. That photo is from about a month or two ago. We received some state funding so that we can, uh, replace the buildings and the garages out there and all the canopies so there, we can put up a photovoltaic system, uh, long-term and microgrid, but also all the, um, charging infrastructure we need for the, uh, battery electric buses that'll be serving the South Coast along with the facility in Santa Barbara. So that's a lot of work, and that's about a $30 million project that we'll be taking on in about a year and a half. Beyond that, I think what's really important, what you want to hear about is a lot of our service and operations planning and the customer experience. Um, working closely with the local planning departments to ensure as those land use plans come along and new projects are, you know, brought, uh, brought forward, that we're coordinating with your, uh, local planning departments to make sure that public transit isn't forgotten, that it's a part of the, uh, the solution. Uh, we've been doing that, and we're committed to that. And really Ms. Blackerby leads that for MTD. Uh, we also monitor closely the changing demographics in the South Coast. You know, a lot of seniors, um, and, and other folks that we, and other facilities that come online that we want to make sure we're able to support. We're constantly looking to improve bus stops, uh, with the help of our partners. We're also looking to implement transit priority projects like Transit Signal Priority. And we do have funding for that. We're doing a, a test with the city of Santa Barbara for a number of the intersections, which will help us, uh, speed up and be more efficient with the vehicle, but do so in coordination with, uh, local circulation. We also have projects such as, um, expanding our bike capacity. We used to be able to handle two bikes per bus. We're up to three now, so we're really happy with that. And as you can see, some pictures downtown, uh, Chapalos where we did some of the improvements with the city there. Um, but I think most people in San, Carpeneria are really most interested in, the, the Seaside Shuttle has not been returned. But it was, when we made it, I had to make a decision, quite frankly, during the pandemic when it started. A lot of services had to be reduced. We had to, uh, limit what we could do with the workforce we had. And so we really focused on the essential worker. And we prioritize those routes where, um, you know, since you get people to their jobs back home. So a lot of our coverage routes, like the Seaside Shuttle, um, the Line 10 out in Galida, Cathedral Oaks, the Downtown Waterfront Shuttle in Santa Barbara, they were all shut down. And they haven't been returned. It wasn't, the return hasn't been necessarily due to funding. It's been due to workforce and the lack of, or inability to hire more bus drivers. I'm going to get to that in the last slide. But what we also did is we want to look at a new service. Rather than return a circulator service, we're looking at on-demand service. And we have these shuttles, and the, the grant allows us to start in Galida for a year to test on-demand, uh, service in, in a couple of regions. There'll be geofence areas in Galida. Then we want to move on to Carpeneria. And I'll get into that here. That shows you the micro-transit area we have planned for Carpeneria as a test. Once we get through Galida, everything that's covered there would be, uh, included in the micro-transit zone for Carpeneria. That's the entire city limits, plus a few other areas such as Paderro. We could never do that with the old shuttles. As cute as they were, they, they just could not get up to, to Baylor Hill. That was always one of the challenges we had, and I'm a lifelong carpenterian, is that we couldn't serve the entire community with the equipment we had at that time. And a fixed route service, to me, is always the priority. Micro-transit will never replace good fixed route service, in my opinion. But what we're looking to accomplish here is, we have a very good fixed route service with the Line 20. We'd love to see it, you know, improve even beyond what it is today. That serves its purpose very well. But what we're lacking is that connectivity for the rest of Carpeneria because of the freeway. We see that. And we think that the on-demand service gives us the ability to connect both sides, the beach, El Caro and areas, but also get out to Baylor, all areas within Carpeneria. So we're excited about this. We do have to get through the Galida, uh, project first, but it's testing different markets in the South Coast, um, over the next few years to see what's really popular, what works. And then we'll have to figure out how to pay for it, frankly. That leads me to the next slide. Uh, one of the things we're struggling with, like a lot in our, a lot of agencies in our industry, is the need, the dependency on COVID relief funds. As I mentioned at the beginning, MTD is very successful with its ridership. Therefore, we were very dependent on fares. Um, and as costs have increased, there's a pretty significant gap. For this coming year, we're projecting a deficit of about $4 million. We have enough COVID funds in our, our annual operating budget, enough COVID funds to get us into fiscal year 28. So we have a few more years to work on closing that gap. And what you see, what we did do, we went out to the public, and we did do our first fare, um, fare structure change, which was passed and adopted by the board recently to increase fares, um, really for the first time since, uh, the Great Recession in 2009. It'd been 16 years since MTD had increased its, uh, base fares. So that'll be going into effect in August. That'll help with the deficit, but it will not close it entirely. We're gonna, we're working with everyone else we can. The state is working with the Transit Transformation Task Force. A lot of folks in our industry are on that. We're hoping we'll be able to get some help, but we're gonna have to really, um, do a lot of work in the next couple of years to try and close that gap. Uh, beyond that, I want to really finish with, I think, what's the most important resource we have, and that's our workforce. You know, I've been with MTD for over, uh, 35 years. And, uh, these gentlemen, for example, that we're highlighting here, just celebrated their 50th work anniversary at MTD. Yeah, 50 years. And there's a few more that are about, gonna experience 50 years, uh, soon, probably in the next year. It's a great place to work. And it's a really good job, a good opportunity here in the community. We are hiring. We are committed to our workforce so that we can, um, we make sure that the jobs are something people want. And we're doing our best, and I think that's really proof of it. And my last slide is really the biggest issue we have against our workforce. There's two pieces of information on this graph. The top half shows you how many bu, uh, operators we were able to hire over the past few fiscal years. So fiscal year 20, in the pandemic, we were only able to hire four people. And then another four and another three. When, when the pandemic hit, we were at about 155 FTE bus operators, um, at that time, maybe 152. Uh, and no surprise, I think you hear this from a lot of business, uh, businesses out there, it was tough to hire. Got, uh, I'd say I'm a little bit more optimistic. As you see, we're able to hire 28 last year, and we've got, uh, more in, in the pipeline this year. So I'm really happy with the response we're getting from the, uh, public and, and interest in the jobs. The bottom half there shows you the net result. We were down 16 drivers in the first year, in the first few months, really. Down negative 35 drivers. And it were even as of last, well, fiscal year 23, June of 2023, we were negative 46 drivers from that peak. That's why we haven't been able to restore service as much as we would like at this point. Um, we've improved. Yeah, we're, we're only negative 38. I don't see us getting back to that old FTE just because of the budget issues, but we will improve on that number, and we should be able to launch those micro-transit services. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from?
Yeah, if I may, uh, go first, just because I want to thank you for being here. I'm, I'm a proud MTD board member, um, and you guys are my favorite board to work with. So don't tell my other boards, but it's the truth. Uh, but I, I just wanted to, um, ask just two quick questions. Uh, is there going to be a, a community meeting in Carpeneria, um, uh, later on this month?
Hillary, that's correct, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I, I believe it's April 23rd, and it'll be in the library multipurpose room. Is that right? And, and what, what, 6:00 PM. And so what will be the topic of conversation so that people will come out and participate?
Yeah, it'll be our service plan for, for next year, primarily.
Okay, great. Uh, and then my only other question, um, uh, I had heard from Hillary that, that you guys are interested in making, uh, presentations around town for groups that are interested, um, in learning more about either the fare change or the schedule change or micro-transit. Um, and I wanted to recommend, um, connecting with AgeWell, which is the city's, uh, senior programming, uh, with their liaison is Jenna Jenkins. And I think they would really, uh, get a lot out of a, a presentation on the micro-transit option.
Happy to do it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, a quick question for you, Jerry. Uh, first off, uh, when do you anticipate, um, or plan on having this, uh, micro-transit, the on-demand for Carpeneria? Just so people know.
Yeah, that's a great question. We have to start in Galida. That's what we, you know, so we're gonna do that for about a year. We're testing right now, so we're hoping to launch by the end of this month, um, and actually start. And that, that's a good opportunity for us to just to kind of work out some, any issues that we experienced at first. So I think we'll get through that. And if we can do it any sooner, we, we'll try. It really comes down to making sure we can hire enough operators and having the vehicles. We have more vehicles on order.
Good estimate, year-wise? Two years, three years?
I would say one year.
Okay.
I would love to do it sooner if I have the vehicles and the drivers.
Sounds good. Second question I have is, um, I've heard a few times about job opportunities. I'd like to see you kind of plugging that one. Uh, events like you're having would be a great way to start doing it, especially here in Carpeneria. There's a lot of people looking for work.
Yep, absolutely. Um, please look us up. It's a great opportunity. There's a lot of carpentarians already work for us, so, yep.
Perfect. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. I appreciated the slide where you share, uh, Carpeneria's ridership for fiscal year 21. I'm curious to know, um, because Line 19X was no longer after that, what our ridership is now? And if it reduced due to, like, the line being cut or just reduced because it just did?
Yeah, the 19X does exist. The 21X, which we did, um, at one point suspend, and we moved the hours into the 20 at that time. That was right before the pandemic. And the 21X, what it did was it was a, it was an express to Santa Barbara. And you have the commuter services that kind of serve that purpose as well. But what we saw at that point with the construction, the Line 20 going through Summerlin and Montecito was actually, during the peaks, getting there faster than the express. So it just made sense to, to suspend that service, roll it up. And then actually, the, the pandemic hit after that, if I remember correctly. So really for us, it's get through the construction and then reassess what's here or what, what services are needed. And right now, for me, honestly, I think where I'm leaning, but it's still too soon to tell, is I think it's this on-demand service and connecting the community is even a higher priority because the express, the service we have with the 20 plus some of the commuter services, and maybe even a, a train, a commuter train, will help that market as well.
Awesome. Thank you for clarifying that. And then what is the ridership number for Carpeneria now?
Um.
Recent stats that you might have?
I think it was over 200,000 for the Line 20. Top of my head, that was on that slide.
Oh, that, that was for fiscal year 21. So it sounds like it's priced the same?
It is.
Hasn't changed.
It was down there at the bottom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
About 240, yeah, it's hard to read. My, I should have just used two different slides. About 240,000, it looks like they get that right.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. And I would say, um, I have a 13-year-old, and you having that third bike rack installed really makes a difference because now three of the, three friends can go up.
Appreciate that feedback.
And not just the two, so thank you.
Mm-hmm. Appreciate the feedback.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. We're gonna go ahead and open up public comments. I don't have any speaker slips. Anyone on Zoom, Brian? No? Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council for a motion.
I move to receive and file the presentation from the Santa Barbara Metropolitan Transit District.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Next item on our agenda is the introduction of new employee Pam Greer, Finance Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council and public. Uh, my name is Lizette Maldonado, Administrative Services Director for the city. I am pleased to introduce, uh, Pam Greer as our new Finance Manager. Pam brings more than 29 years of financial accounting and reporting experience, including over 16 years in local government. Pam has served in leadership roles with the cities of Ojai, Oxnard, Ventura, and Ventura County Fire. She has been instrumental in implementing financial systems and process improvements throughout her career. She is known for her hands-on leadership, strong analytical skills, and her collaborative team-focused approach. Uh, Pam holds a bachelor's degree from UC Santa Barbara, a master's in accounting and financial management, and a graduate certification in accounting. Um, please join me in welcoming Pam to the city of Carpeneria.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pertim, council member, resident, and staff. Um, I am happy to be joining this very collaborative team in Ojai. I'm excited to get started, so I wanted to show you how excited I am. I already have my pen. So, um, I'm anxious and excited again to, uh, support, um, Lizette in her, um, accomplishing her goals for the department and the city of Carpeneria. Thank you.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now temporarily adjourn for the purpose of holding the monthly meeting of the Carpeneria Library Board of Trustees. Call to order and roll call.
President Alcorn, all board members are present and accounted for?
Great, thank you. Confirmation of legal noticing and procedural requirements of meeting?
All legal noticing and procedural requirements have been met.
Great, thank you. Um, number three, public comment. So any comments not on, any comments on matters not otherwise on the agenda, but within the subject matter of the Carpeneria Library Board of Trustees? Rojo Delgado, come on up.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Rojo Delgado, Carpeneria, uh, uh, resident. This is about, uh, our community concerns on five, uh, districts. I'm gonna give you, following, uh, family, families, Alvarez, Cuevas, Suarez, Zamora, Rodriguez, Juarez, Alanis, Jimenez, Salgado, Torres. I talked to people a lot, and, uh, this basically are their, uh, major concerns on all five districts. Number one, they have seen sales tax going, uh, around.
Um, Mr. Delgado, I'm sorry. This, uh, public comment is just for the Carpeneria Library Board of Trustees?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
So, um, your public comment might be better served a little bit later.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. Um, seeing no other public comment. Anyone on Zoom, Brian?
I'm here. We have no raised hands.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Um, we'll move on to agenda item number four, which is approval of minutes of the regular meeting held March 10th.
I move to approve the meetings of, uh, the minutes of the regular meeting held March 10th, 2025.
Second?
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number five, which is the Carpeneria Community Library Monthly Report for April 2025.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, council members. I brought some staff updates for the following items. The city librarian. The application period closed on April 9th with first round interviews scheduled for Friday, April 18th. The recruitment yield a strong applicant pool. Library technician interviews were conducted on March 31st. Choosing the existing candidate list, a conditional offer has been accepted by the selected candidate, uh, literacy coordinator. On April 30th, a successful tutor training session was conducted with a diverse group of 16 individuals of varying ages. These individuals will be matched with English learners of different proficiency levels in the coming days and weeks. Library outreach on April 2nd, the Carpeneria Head Start Program held a parent socialization event at the library, attended by approximately 21 families and community, community fire staff. The event include a presentation by our community engagement librarian on the 1,000 books before five program. This library initiative encouraged parents to read 1,000 books with their child before kindergarten, helping young children develop early literacy skills, build vocabulary, and enter school prepared to learn. Additionally, the library will be hosting a fraud prevention class in Spanish on April 21st offered by the sheriff department. Seasonal part-time position, a recruitment for a seasonal summer position will be, uh, opening very soon. This position will provide support for the summer reading program during June and July. and July. Regarding the library strategic plan update, development of the library strategic plan is currently underway. The initial phase has been completed, which include onboarding, including project management meetings, workflow planning, access to existing data, and scheduling of in-person and virtual meetings. Mission ambition sessions with library staff, shop analysis with library staff, community asset mapping training, a vision session with a library advisory commission and the friends of the Carpinteria Library, interviews and meetings with city staff. The initial timeline for the strategic plan was condensed, making the community asset mapping phase field rush. To allow for a more thorough and thoughtful process, the project completion timeline has been extended into August 2025. This extension will also allow the newly hired city librarian to contribute to the final strategic plan. City staff, the library advisory commission, and the consultant are in agreement that this revised timeline will provide a more comprehensive understanding of community needs. Federal funding to public libraries. The California State Library received a notice of termination of federal grant by the Institute of Museum and Library Services, stating that the 2024-25 Federal Grant Award under the Library Service and Technology Act, LST 2025. This decision will have a significant impact on LSTA fund programs, including vital services such as lunch at the library, workforce development programs, and book-to-action initiatives. The services and resources currently provided statewide by the state library that will be discontinued include funds to add titles to California bookshelves and statewide access to the materials, subscriptions to the New York Times, free access to Cal Matters for Learning, free access to continuing education and leadership opportunities for library staff through California Library Learn, resources guides, collection of books, and training for staff to support summer reading programs, subscriptions to pro-literacy and change aging, and training and resources for local library literacy programs, subscriptions to volunteer match, and support for recruiting, training, and working with volunteers, free access to policy map, mapping and data analytics tool, and training for staff in collecting and using data, preservation and digitalization services for collections, training for library staff, and support for setting up memory labs. The direct impact to the Carpinteria Community Library users will be minimal. It is likely that the current free access to the New York Times and Sun Learning platforms will be eliminated between now and July 1, 2025. Some in-person and new staff training opportunities will not be available. However, Black Gold Coast and the Sigbook grant should not be affected. Library story. The English as a Second Language Class through Santa Barbara City College recently visited the Carpinteria Library to familiarize themselves with available resources. During the visit, students learned how to navigate libraries' catalog and collections, access books, magazines, movies, museum, and park passes, the library of things, as well as take advantage of various free programs. As a result, many students registered for library cards, with 90% of the class now active library users. Finally, operations, restroom renovation, pumbling bars have been ordered, and staff are working together to plan for the least distribution possible while new toilets, floor drain, new tiling, and new changing trailers are installed in the restaurants. Following a recent system update, the library's COHA system now supports Spanish-language communication. This update allows patrons to receive automatic email notifications and print transactions receipts in Spanish if they prefer. The notice need to be manually created by staff, but that process has begun. By the way, COHA, the library management system, handles all aspects of library operations, including cataloging, circulation, acquisition, and reporting. Happy to answer any question. You have some.
Thank you for your report. Any questions?
I saw in the staff report a mention of the immigrant panel that the library is going to be hosting at the Alcazar Theater. I think that's a wonderful idea, and I wanted to ask, there was a little discrepancy in the date. The staff report said it would be Tuesday, May 15, but I think May 15, that's a Thursday.
I think it's Thursday, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I just wanted to clarify. So it's on Thursday, May 15. And then, do you know, will people need to reserve tickets ahead of time, or is it first come, first served?
First come, first served.
What the panel will be discussing, because it sounds like such a phenomenal idea.
Yeah, the panel is bringing immigrants, which are local carpentarians, people who has, who is doing a great job in community as a gray laborers. We are going to hear about their experiences of coming to the US and how they contribute to the, to this society, and what, what is their point of view of this experience that some people doesn't have.
I think it's really special that you guys are putting that together. So thank you. And then just one other clarification. For the Spanish-language fraud prevention class, I see that it's going to be on the 21st, but when and where will it be?
It's going to be on Monday, 21, in the Carpinteria Library, in the community room, actually.
And at what time?
At 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM. Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think that I didn't mention about the Carpinteria Reads Program. Or did I? This program is going to begin on Tuesday, April 1, and it's featuring "Solito" by Javier Samora. This title and its related programming will explore themes of immigration and personal experience in the US. "Solito" recounts Samora's experience as child immigration from immigrating from El Salvador to the US, told from the perspective of his nine-years-old self. The program includes two book discussions, one in English and one in Spanish, as well as keynote auto talk on May 1, 6:00 PM at the Bittern Hall. Additionally, a panel discussion that we just talked about. This event held in partnership with the Alcazar Theater, I have to mention, and is scheduled for Tuesday, May 15, 6:00 PM, at the Alcazar Theater. And Spanish translation will be provided at the theater to ensure accessibility for all attendees. As with all library programs, Carpinteria, Carpinteria events are free and open to the public. Program details and complimentary copies of the book are available at the Carpinteria Library, and this program is made possible through the general support of the friends of the Carpinteria Library, who are sponsoring the auto talk and booth giveaway. And Alcazar Theater is a value partner in presenting this community-focused initiative.
Thank you so much for doing that.
Of course.
Any other questions? Nope. I have one question. So, given the federal funding to public libraries, which is incredibly unfortunate, and I'm happy to hear that although library users will have minimal impact, there are a handful of things related or pertaining to training for staff. How will library staff supplement the training that they could have received through these free programming options?
Well, we are planning, actually, we are thinking how to do it, because California Library is the, maybe, maybe the most important source to staff training and professional development, that I personally have take advantage in the last years. And we have, I don't exactly, I don't know the answer right now, but we have to figure out how to start new ways to get our professional development. Probably, we are going to communicate more with the California State Association, California State Libraries Associations to see other ways to get training. And of course, every training and programs that the California Library learns offering the past are accessible right now. What is going to happen is that everything that they have planned available, or they don't have the funds to organize new classes or courses. But the good thing is that most of their classes are online, free to access from any library, public library employee in California.
Great, thank you. Okay. Seeing no other questions? I'll go ahead and open up public comments. Seeing none. Anyone on Zoom, Brian?
I'm here. We have no raised hands.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I move to receive and file the Carpinteria Community Library Report.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. We'll go ahead and move on to item number six, if there's any new business in discussion. On behalf of the council, seeing none. We'll go ahead and move on to adjourning. Thank you. Okay, we will now reconvene the regular meeting of the city council, and we will move on to public information and reports and announcements, which includes a report from our, from law enforcement activity.
Good evening. Oh, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, and Carpinteria community members. The chief, chief's recap for the month of March is on Sunday, March 2. We had another fraud, where an 80-year-old victim bought $1,900 worth of Target and coined me gift cards and gave the card information to the scammer, who claimed the government was going to take all the money out of her bank accounts. So the scam was going to use these cards to secure the victim's money so the government cannot seize her money from her accounts. On Monday, the 3, we had a 211, which is an armed robbery at a business in the 4,000 block of Carpinteria Avenue with a firearm. The male suspect brandished a black firearm, pointed it at the female victim, and stole an amount of cash from the cash register. Sheriff's forensics processed the scene, and the case was sent to detectives. And then on the 5th, we had another fraud case, where an 80-year-old victim who withdrew $40,000 in cash gave it to the scammer who claimed to be from the US Marshals and claimed her identity, the victim's identity, was stolen and associated with illicit purchases. So, and also, an associated scammer also called her using a mask number, which returned to the City of Carpinteria, like a spoof number. So what they'll do is they'll call you from a local number, so you think it may be someone local, but it's actually, you know, just a spoof number. And they also, who claimed to be a deputy with the Santa Barbara Sheriff's Office. And then on the 5th and the 18th, we had a couple e-bike traffic collisions. The first one was the e-bike traveling in the bike lane against traffic, struck the rear passenger side of a panel of a vehicle making a right turn onto Villarreal. And then the second collision, deputies responded to report of a vehicle versus pedestrian accident. An e-bicycleist would determine the 14-year-old student from Carpinteria Medical, Middle School had been struck by a vehicle while riding his electric bike, and the juvenile was at fault for running the red light, and the driver was nonlicensed. So the driver was cited as well for being a nonlicensed driver. And community outreach, Deputy Pereira provided elder scam presentation in English on April 3 at the Veterans, Veterans Hall Meeting Room. 12 members of the public attended, and from what I hear, it was a good conversation, a lot of questions, and went over very well. And then, and then also, coming up on the 21st of this month will be the Spanish version presentation. So I urge people to spread the news and get your elderly people there, everybody really, but specifically for the elderly regarding scams. On April 7, I participated in the e-conveyance safety discussion with other local stakeholders, and we have coffee with a cop that we're still trying to put together. Criminal Investigations Bureau, we had a number of cases assigned, were three, and the detectives are currently working on 16 active cases at Carpinteria. And then my message, of course, is always use 911 for emergency, for emergencies only, and the non-emergency dispatch number for non-emergencies. Again, on scams, that's coming back, or actually, it's staying here prevalent, as I just listed the nine most frequent elderly scams. One is the grandparent scam, where they kind of act like they're a kid and they're in some type of danger and try to get the money sent to them. Another, number two is a government impersonation scam. They'll act as IRS or Social Security Administration, trying to elicit information from you. And then you have the investment scams, where there'll be a minimal risk and assured returns. Also, this is like land property or something. I've seen it before, where they send you your property deed for somewhere in, across the country, where you're the heir of, you know, this million-dollar estate or something. You have health insurance scams, where they impersonate medical agents for, trying to elicit your personal information. You'll have fake accident scams, where they impersonate a relative or a loved one needing help. A lot of this time, maybe it's a grandson or somebody that's got an accident, they need $5,000 to get out of a jam or something. And you'd be surprised on how many people end up sending this money. Technical support scam, I think we've all seen and heard that, where they offer help to fix the virus on your computer, and then they get all your information. The lottery scam, where you won, and then you provide them your account info. Fake charity scams, especially after a disaster, like we've had here many times. We have a lot of fake charity scams. Also, like the National Police Officer Association, if you ever had that, that recording, they don't, they don't solicit over the phone for that from the National Police Officer. So don't give any money to that. And then you have bank fraud calls as well, trying to, you know, tell you that you have fraud with your account, and then they ask you for your personal information. And just to touch again on the e-bike and bicycle safety, we've had multiple collisions, like I discussed. We're currently collaborating with the city and other local stakeholders to address safety issues within the community, and soon we'll be put forth a campaign to educate the public on bike safety and the rules of the road for bicyclists. And just to throw this out there, bicyclists are, follow all the same traffic laws as vehicles. So, I don't know if everybody knows that or not. I think they don't, to be honest with you, to see how everybody rides their bike out there. But you got to stop at stop signs, red lights, and make, you know, stay in the lane, make a turn, everything like that. And that's in my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Actually, I do. Quick question for you. I've been asked this by a few people now. Does your department and the officers also take a look at, and I would say, enforce vehicle codes? For example, noisy cars, tinted windows, things like that? Is that something that falls outside of your purview?
No, that's, we, we're, that's part of the vehicle code. So, yeah, we enforce that. That's, I mean, there's going to be a lot of tinted windows there that you're not going to enforce, but yes, it's enforceable.
Because sound has been kind of an issue lately. I hear a lot of cars pretty uncorked, making a lot of noise out there.
Oh, yeah. Hmm. I'll have to look into that.
Just, just curious. It'd be good to know. At least let the public aware that, yeah, you're going to be enforcing this.
Yeah. I personally don't know. They go by decibels or whatnot. I don't know the sound, but I could.
He's allowed. He wouldn't even be close.
But we could ask our traffic guys from Galileo.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
So I was able to attend the English language fraud prevention workshop at the Vets Hall. I thought it was really well done. One thing that really struck me, though, is of the attendees, that, you know, there were 12 or 13, and half of them talked, half of the seniors there talked about recent times that they have been the victims of scams. So it seems like this is a really, an issue that's really impacting the carp community, the senior community, and probably beyond. So I was wondering if it'd be possible to either set up another fraud prevention workshop, maybe in another location in town, or find other ways to push that information out there, because it was really, really upsetting hearing so many of the people that turned up there had, like, some of them had literally been a victim of a phone scam the week before. And it just, it was really sad to hear.
Yeah, I, it's, it's kind of unreal, you know. So, sure, if you guys want to get a arena for us and give us, you know, we'll pick a couple dates, and we'd be more than happy to come out there and do that again. I think it's very beneficial for the community.
Great. Thank you very much. And then whenever you're ready for, with dates for coffee with a cop, we can find some places for that, too.
Sounds good.
Looking forward to those efforts. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. I have a question. Thank you for your report, Chief. I appreciate it. Just one other scam, and I'm going to out myself, is Amazon. They, I'm an Amazon user, and I've received so many Amazon texts about them having placed a large order, which then requires you to call. So that's another one to add to your, to your list for the community. My other question for you is, in terms of the e-bikes, I know that there will be a campaign, outreach campaign, that will be happening at some point. How about a presentation to our youth at the, either the middle school or the high school? Is that something that's still going to happen?
It's, we're working on that. So, yes, that is going to happen. I think that's, might be where we want to start our outreach, right?
Okay.
So.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. Seeing no other questions? I'll go ahead and open up public comments. Yes, Mr. Delgado?
Thank you, Rojo Delgado, Carpinteria resident for many, many years. First of all, I would like to thank our police chief for their, police protection. And, I mean, protection. And, I mean, protection. Whenever a 911 call is placed, an ambulance or sheriff is within, I would say, three minutes. And that's something that I appreciate that very much. And Carpinteria, it's such a beautiful, small city, that, and the, and the safety issue is one of the reasons that, for example, my family, the Lopez, the Cuevas family, and my own family, that's why we haven't moved anywhere else. Because of the safety, of the safety. If I've been, sometimes with, what about moving to Mexico? No, over there, it's, takes probably half an hour before you get help. Up here, it's within minutes, and that's something that we appreciate that. Also, another scam, Facebook, there's companies where they offer you, let's say, a computer really cheap, really cheap, and you read 100 comments. I got it last week, beautiful. It's, it's not beautiful, because it's a scam. People have told me about it, so. Credit cards, banks, they give you your money back, but is that, because of fraud, a fraud this big on Facebook, can it be reported to, to the police so that they could, maybe a detective, a detective can investigate the issue? Because it's, it's huge. Yeah, just that promise, and then they deduct that money automatically from your credit card. And that money is gone. And once again, thank you, thank you so much, Chief, for the protection, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back. Any other final questions? That's, nope, okay, thank you for your report. You too. Next, we have updates on behalf of the city manager.
Yes, Mayor, council, community members, the city manager's report includes brief updates. I don't always cover them all, so I encourage people to read the full report. And if there's any greater interest on any of the items, happy to bring those back for a future agenda matter. There were three items that have come up since the publishing of this report, that I will comment on, one of them being the State of the City event that we participated in on Friday. We also had our annual Household Hazardous Waste Event that I will touch on briefly, and another one that our Community Development Director, Nick Bravoff, will touch on. I will also be joined by our Assistant City Manager, Ryan Kents, as he covers things related to our city employee updates. As part of my report, I want to touch on the Capital Improvement Plan Study Session that we had. This was on March 25th, city staff conducted a CIP, which we call for the Capital Improvement Plan Study Session, and the purpose of it was to determine criteria for prioritizing capital projects. I think a lot of times, these are looked over, and I should mention that the Capital Improvement Plan is nearly 44% of the city's entire budget, not even general fund, this is all funds, including every fund and all grants, and so it's a, it's a major part of the city. And so we approved prioritization criteria, including strategic alignment, deferred maintenance, available grant funds, available local funds, and community benefit. And the video of this CIP study session can be viewed on the city website again for March 25th, and I encourage people to review that. I will also say that, happy to announce CERT, which is our Community Emergency Response Team, is returning back to Carpinteria in spring. So Julissa Breones, who you all met, I think last meeting, we introduced our new program manager, she's been working closely with the CERT Collaborative and Dave Baker with the Summerlin, Carp Summerlin Fire District, to enhance community resilience in Carpinteria through emergency preparedness programs and initiatives. So we're pleased to announce the reinstatement of this program and the training courses. CERT provides local residents with the opportunity to acquire essential skills for both individual and neighborhood safety in the event of a disaster. And the upcoming training program will be conducted over an eight-week period commencing on May 13th, 2025, and will take place every Thursday evening from 6:00 PM to 8:45 PM at Veterans Hall. And as I mentioned, we had the opportunity to participate in the state of the city. Our mayor gave a presentation in front of all three cities, this event's put on by the South Coast Chamber of Commerce, and we were joined by the city of Galita and the city of Santa Barbara. We heard from all of the mayors. And then as a city manager, I had a chance to represent Carpinteria along with the city manager from Galita and the city administrator from Santa Barbara. We reviewed things like our revenues, expenses, budget considerations, and a number of other questions. And I believe the chamber makes that available on YouTube through one of their sites, and so as soon as I have that link, I'll share that. But more exciting than that is that the city is in, looking at dates to do a local State of the City. Well, we'll invite the community to come in, and we will reprovide all of this information. The, the chamber event is a paid event, and so it creates some barriers for people to be able to attend, and so we're excited about getting the opportunity to bring this to anybody who would like to attend. And it was great to hear from you, Mayor, and there was a wonderful video that we had put together that I can't wait for people to hear around our theme for this year, which is our city's 60th anniversary, that we also look forward to celebrating on a date to be determined in September. So excited about that. And then for the Household Hazardous Waste Program, I just have a little bit of information on that, and we'll return with more information at the next meeting, things like tonnage and that sort of stuff. But what I did find out is that we had 246 cars for the household goods, and 108 for the hazardous waste material that was dropped off. So it's great that that ended up being processed correctly instead of other ways that somehow those things can get disposed of. And so the, again, the exact tonnage and more details regarding the event and maybe how it compared to previous events will be shared by either myself or our program manager, Aaron Maker, at the next meeting. So with that, I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager, Ryan Kents, to touch on some employee updates.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Good evening, Mayor, council members. So on the recruitment's front, we are still recruiting for the aquatics part-time summer positions. Please encourage our community to apply immediately, we are opening those positions until they're filled. We have also closed the application period for the city librarian. We received several applications, so we're excited about that, and we're currently reviewing those applications to bring in them for interviews. Next, we have our principal planner. We have gone through the full recruitment, and we are currently going through the background check with the selected applicants, so soon we'll be presenting our new principal planner to the council. And then finally, we have the full-time Public Works Manager position that is still open, and the deadline to apply is May 4th, 2025. And then, as part of the city council's strategic plan item of developing a high-performance team here at City Hall, I'd like to report on several trainings that staff has done over the past couple weeks here, including Kalen Pina attended a water safety instructor training and received her water safety instructor trainer certification. The Jenna Jenkins, our Agewell Program Coordinator, attended the California Parks and Recreation Society Conference, along with Jeanette Gant, our Director of Public, or, sorry, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. And then also Mindy Fogg, our Community Development Department Principal Planner, attended the Association of Environmental Professions, Professionals at the California State Conference, so that was a big thing, and I know she helped organize and plan that conference as well, so she was a big part of that event. And then finally, I had the pleasure of attending the CJPIA Leadership, Executive Leadership Training last week with several other city managers from the California region, and was able to interact and have a lot of great dialogue with a lot of other city managers and assistant city managers. So that's it for my report, and I'll turn it back over to City Manager, Mr. Ramirez. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and I'll, and I'll just add on to that, that we had actually several members from the Community Development Department. If you look at the report, Cindy Satter, Marissa Smith, and Megan Musov all took turns attending, of course, we couldn't send them all at once to keep things going, and so they took turns, and it was great. They also participated in the panels. I know that Mindy was part of one of the panels, as well as Megan, so not only were they participants, but they were also part of that. And if there's anything I left out, I'm sure Nick would like to add that, but I'll turn it over to him now for a few of his updates.
Thanks, Michael. Now, you covered the additional attendees from my team that made it to the conference that I was gonna note. I did have, though, a couple other items I wanted to share for the council, one that's in your city manager's report and one that didn't quite make the cut by the time we published, but nevertheless, I still want to share with you. So coming up on May 5th, our Planning Commission will be reviewing the Chevron Oil and Gas Processing Facility Decommissioning Project. So this is something we've been working on here for several years, this is involving the oil and gas plant directly behind City Hall here. The project would remove all of the defunct oil and gas equipment, both above ground and below ground, on the site, including the offshore pipelines that run from the platforms back into the plant, and then would remediate the site, so clean up the soils, and then regrade and revegetate the site, returning it back to its, its pre-development condition. The environmental, proposed environmental impact report for that project has recently been published on the city website, so that's up and available. And so if folks are interested, they can go to the homepage, carpinteriesca.gov, and scroll down to the bottom under Hot Topics. And down here in the bottom left-hand corner is the Oil Processing Facility Decommissioning and Remediation page. And so right up at the top is the proposed final EIR. We've broken it up into a couple different bite-sized pieces to make it a little bit more navigable, it's a, it's a hefty document otherwise. So there's an executive summary, there's the EIR, and then there's the technical appendices split into three. With the main one here, I wanted to draw to people's attention, is Appendix I, which are the comments received for the draft EIR back last January, December and January. And so these are, those comments received, accumulated together, and then the responses to those comments and annotations on where in the proposed final EIR you can see updated discussion to respond to those comments received. So again, we're targeting May 5th for that hearing, and the Agenda and Staff Report should be published on the city website about one week prior to that date. The other item I wanted to share was on behalf of our neighbors at the county of Santa Barbara. So just on Friday, the county's Division of Housing and Community Development, which is part of their Community Services Department, released two documents for public review. One of them is the Draft 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan. What this is, is it's kind of the guidance plan that the county uses to help steer how the investment of federal housing funds should be used to implement the county's identified housing priorities, which are affordable housing, homeless services, public services, and public facilities and infrastructure improvements. And so the city is a member of the CDBG Urban County Partnership, and therefore we are also part of this consolidated plan. So that's been released just this last Friday for a 30-day public review period, and then it'll be going to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration on May 13th. And then, relatedly, the county also released their draft pro-housing designation application. And so what this is, is it's a, it's a designation allowed or created under the state HCD Department that rewards local jurisdictions who take steps to go above and beyond in terms of implementing local policies to help facilitate new housing. And so this is the county's application that outlines the different steps that they've either taken or have committed to taking in an effort to try to reach this, this designation. The benefit of doing so is it makes that jurisdiction more competitive for a variety of local grants that the state administers related to housing projects. So this one, I think, is just more informational, it's something we're looking into, as I know there's some interest in what a pro-housing designation could look like for Carpinteria, so we'll be digging into it ourselves, but I wanted to just, again, make the community aware of that, that that's up as well for a 30-day public review period, and that'll also be going to the Board of Supervisors on May 13th.
Happy to take any questions about any of those matters.
For the CERT classes, is there a cost for residents to participate in them, and is there an age limit for participants?
Vice Mayor Soler Sono, that's a great question, and I will have to get back to you on that one.
Okay. And in terms of the state of the city, has Carpinteria done a State of the City in previous years?
Vice Mayor Soler Sono through the mayor, trying to get better at those formalities. Are you talking about the local or the one through the chamber?
The local one.
So, I'd look to Wade, Councilmember Nemora. So, yeah, it sounds like prior to me being here, that we used to do some locally, I think maybe at that time through what our Carpinteria Chamber was at that time, and then I think when our chamber became part of the South Coast Chamber of Commerce, it became one. And so, you know, with that event being, again, down in Santa Barbara and being costly, we, we thought it would be a good idea to just bring back our own version. We know that Galita does the same thing, and so it won't have nearly, you know, as much fanfare or things like that, but more importantly, just to share the information and make staff available for questions.
Okay, so, but it's not, was it part of the planned community outreach from the city? Just because I, I hadn't heard that that was something that we were thinking about doing. I had heard that there'd be maybe like a budget outreach, would this be part of that too, like to help educate the public about the budget process and all, is that kind of the same idea?
Yes, Vice Mayor Soler Sono through the mayor. So, yeah, there are, there are plans to get out and start doing education related to the budget. This could be considered absolutely a part of that, but was more of a, of a thought as we were discussing the State of the City in general, and some of the barriers to access that locals had, and it's something that we can do relatively inexpensively, we're talking about, you know, opening up perhaps the Vets Hall at no cost, and some snacks, and just, really just making the information available. But to your point, yes, it would be in line with the idea of us getting out there and doing more education to the public regarding the budget as a whole.
And is that an event that we could all attend, or would that be a Brown Act?
No, a wonderful question, so we would end up, that's another really good reason why we want to do the local event for community members listening in who might not know exactly what we're talking about here. There are Brown Act issues related to certain meetings, where more than a quorum of the council is in attendance. And so at the State of the City event that the chamber had, we had multiple council members that really wanted to be in attendance for that, however, for Brown Act reasons, and with the consultation of our city attorney, we elected to keep that only to two members, and because it wasn't our event and there was a fee, it made it difficult to work around that. With a local State of the City event, we would do a public notice and convene it as a public meeting, a majority of the council could be in attendance for that event and be available for questions with the public, which is another great reason. Oh, and of course, yeah, it would also be free.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. I don't have any speaker slips, Brian, anyone on Zoom?
Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Okay, Mr. Delgado?
Thank you, Roger L. Delgado, Carpinteria resident for decades. This is what I do, I basically talk to people everywhere I go. Church, coffee shops, the Baylor Park, on the street, about anything. Gave you the names of 10 families, because I can give you the name of 50 families, but that would take my time. Basically, this is, there are main concerns in the five districts that you represent. As I mentioned, number one. As I mentioned, number one, the sales tax. They have seen it in Santa Barbara, they have seen it in Los Angeles and north, and they're concerned about our sales tax. Not racing. Number two, the high cost of rent. A permanent, two-bedroom, $3,200. Three-bedroom, $5,000. A house, $6,000, $7,000. Number three, people move into other cities, even out of state. Number four, inflation. That's why they go shopping to other cities. People, people working two jobs. Someone even working three jobs just to keep on track. Families not only unable to rent, but also unable to buy cheapest condo, $650,000, 7% per year fixed. Another concern, people not knowing their district representative, and they move around. Some of them did, some of them do not. Sometimes when I'm on Reynolds, on El Bravo Street, I'm saying, where am I? What district is this? So I would give this idea probably when you state your name, state your district. That way, people would be more familiar with your name and that way, if you could, that would address some of their concerns by district. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor, apologize for the interruption, but I did notice Julie Sabrión is in the corner of the room and if she could answer Vice Mayor Soler-Sonell's question regarding the CERT program.
Hi, councilmember through the mayor. So CERT is a free program, so residents do not pay anything. It is in coordination with FEMA. And then as City Manager Ramirez mentioned, Carpinteria Summerlin Fire Protection District is also heavily involved, as well as a CERT County Collaborative. At this time, we are only able to support 30 residents participating in CERT. It's really meant to be a really small program. There is an element of, you know, in-person engagement where we go through fire safety and some other in-person components as well. So at this time, it'll be limited to 30 residents, but we do look to expand that and hope to have another class in the fall and then in years to come, hopefully expand it in a bilingual aspect as well.
And is it for over age 18 or is it for, can teens be involved or what's that cutoff?
Sure. So at this time, it's only 18 years and above, but in future years, we can explore having a teen CERT, which is common across other municipalities.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I also have a question regarding CERT. For those that have gone through CERT and gone through the advanced program, I assume that there's, well, since there's only a limit of 30 that you wouldn't want them to come through at this point in time.
Sure. So we encourage this, at least this first program, to be for folks that have not already gone through the program. However, CERT graduates are more than welcome to come and participate and help lead some of the classes, but in terms of being a student through the class, we kindly ask that. We limit it to residents that have not undergone this training.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and officially close public comment. No other questions from the council. So we'll go ahead and move on to Planning Commission actions.
Thank you, Mayor Alarcon. The Planning Commission had one item on their most recent agenda, which was last Monday, April 7th. That item was the Yamas Residence Remodel and Structural Alterations located at 1082 Elm Lane. This is an old, nearly 100-year-old cottage that is legal non-conforming in a variety of manners. It's a very small home on a very small lot and so it's in all the setbacks and doesn't have onsite parking, so on and so forth. And the remodel would have involved some structural alterations within some of those non-conforming portions of the home, and that's why it had to go to the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission voted 4-0 to approve the conditional use permit and coastal development permit as presented, and that was it for the Planning Commission.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions on behalf of the council? Okay. Well, go ahead and open up public comment. I don't have any speaker slips. Anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Mayor, we have no Zoom speakers.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Thank you for your presentation. We will now move on to general public comment on matters not on the agenda, and I do have a few speaker slips. So Michael Baker, followed by Fred Shaw. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Michael Baker and I have the honor of being the CEO for United Boys and Girls Clubs. I wanted to share a couple things with you tonight. First and foremost, I'd like to invite each and every one of you down to the CARP Club. If you haven't been there for a few months, we have a beautiful mural that was put up depicting the history of the Carpinteria Club, photo mural. I would love to have, give each guy a tour of the facility and be able to see the impact that that's had on, had so many people come back to look at that and say, that's me when I was 10. And I remember making that, and those are folks that have been longtime supporters of the Boys and Girls Club. And, you know, I always talk about, you want proof that Boys and Girls Clubs work. Three presenters before you, Jerry Estrada is a club kid. He grew up in the CARP Club and look what he's doing with his life now. So we're incredibly proud of individuals like Jerry and the work that they're doing. And of course, I always have to point to Pastor Mayor Nemora as a club kid as well. I will tell you that also, over this past break, we had 48 youth that came to our CARP Club for full-day services. That was something that we continue to do and we do that during, not only in the summertime, but during winter breaks and spring breaks. And that's happened, 48 kids, and we only charge $75 a week for that full-day service, which is a phenomenal price. If you compare that to daycare, good luck putting that up against anything else. And then we also, this past year, have awarded over $12,000 in scholarships to families here in Carpinteria. That money is raised at the CARP auction that we do to support the Boys and Girls Club. And finally, what I'll tell you is that not this past Friday, and not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before, something that's become an annual event for us, we've done it now the past four, three years, we took four children from each of our club locations, Lompoc, Bueltown, Solvang, Galita, Santa Barbara, and Carpinteria, and we took them to Disney. These are children that have never been to Disneyland before in their lives, and the club directors got to pick the four kids that they wanted to go. I will tell you, the bus, Santa Barbara Airbus, thank goodness for them, they helped provide the transportation for us, but they picked up in Lompoc and they picked up in Bueltown, solving, and made our way, and the final pickup was in Carpinteria. Left Carpinteria at 5:45 in the morning and got to Disney before it opened and didn't leave till the park closed. The bus pulled back here at 2:30 a.m. to drop the kids off, and they had an incredible day, an incredible day for those children. So I just want to tell you that that's all happens because of the support that we generate here within the city of Carpinteria. So I want to thank you all very much for your continued support. Have a good day.
Thank you. Fred Shaw, followed by Alan Koch.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. I'm here representing HopeNet of Carpinteria tonight, and we try and do this monthly. If you or someone that you know is in a crisis situation and needs help, we would ask if you, let them know to call 988, which is the National Suicide Prevention Hotline. They'll be connected to an operator which will then connect them to resources that are locally here that they can access that might help them through the crisis. The other thing that we do throughout the community is we pass out these cards. I don't know if we've still got some in the lobby, but we pass out these cards in English and Spanish. And in these cards, it not only talks about the 988 number, but it also gives you information as things to look for if you know someone and you see some of this suicide ideation with some of this information. And it also gives you ways you might possibly be able to help them. One of the big ones being just to listen to people in crisis. Just that friendly ear really helps. Now, if I could, I'd like to give this to Brian, and all of you can grab one of these cards. They're in English and in Spanish, and if there's any left, put them in the lobby. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Alan Koch, followed by Gail Marshall.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, fellow community members. This is a little continuation of a conversation I think I started with the City Council on an email, December 30th, regarding a business plan for this private partnership, private-public partnership with developing a hotel on Parking Lot 3. Okay, subsequent to that, you know, to that, I did have an opportunity to meet with Michael on this, to discuss this business plan, a concept and idea. But what I want to take my time up right now is, I had some extra time, so I just went back and looked at the request for proposal related to this back in August of 2017, before the Surfliner Inn name was even presented. This was the first time it went out to all, to, I guess, to all of the developers in the region. It asked for not only architectural drawings, concepts about a proposal on Parking Lot 3, it also asked, this is verbatim, how they would operate the hotel. Well, to me, that's a business plan. There was also reference to an operating pro-former that needed to be 20 years of their proposed operations, including assumptions underlying the line item income and expense projections. Detailed pro-formers was a format acceptable so that the city could use that during the negotiation of a development agreement. Now, I know we have a development agreement, so maybe they're, they did deliver that. The other part of the RFP was obviously identification of the entities, the individuals involved, and a summary of their team's past experiences in developing similar projects. So jump to November 2018, they selected the timer group, there was a staff report, there was an Attachment B, which is questionnaires and two resumes, but nothing related to any kind of document about how they would operate the hotel and no 20-year operating pro-former. So I'm running out of time here, but what I would like to do, a request through the mayor to the staff, if any of this documentation exists, please get it out on the website under Hot Topic, because it is something that the public is debating out in social media and throughout the community. And if it is not, my last point here, we appreciate, if it is not available to put it on the website, some type of business plan or how to do it. In attendance tonight, okay, we have the lead principal individual with Hollis of the new developing group. Maybe request that they put up a business plan and some operating pro-former. They have a pretty robust website and that would be a great addition to the community, okay? And give everybody a comfort level about entering a 55-year lease. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Gail Marshall, followed by Rogelio Delgado.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity. I'm here tonight to talk about an issue that I know is important to all of you. My observation of only 12 years living in Carpinteria is a most important issue for the city is housing. It's the issue that most clearly addresses keeping Carpinteria Carpinteria. Providing housing affordability for all sectors of our community is the key to preserving our city as a small beach town in the future. It's not an easy task because there's so many aspects of housing affordability. There's the preservation of existing neighborhoods. The first thing I realized when we moved here 12 years ago was that neighborhood preservation should be a priority. I went so far as to go door-to-door in my neighborhood to ascertain how my neighbors felt about more second-story development. A majority owners of homes in the Concholoma and Arbulverde neighborhoods agreed that two-story development would lead to the McMansion-ization of the area and that having a zoning ordinance that restricts such development would be preferable. It would not eliminate the right to expand living space, it just meant no new two stories, but we just couldn't get a foothold at the council. There are other neighborhoods that probably should be looked at for preservation as well. Then there's the short-term rental issue. Carpinteria passed a reasonable short-term rental ordinance and that ordinance needs to be supported with enforcement. Additionally, the city needs to take care not to allow more of this type of lodging as it removes housing for locals. City partnerships with housing developers. The city owns property around the city. Why not prioritize it for housing? The city is considering partnering with a developer for a hotel, which will only increase the need for low-income housing in our community. Why not zero in on partnerships for housing? A housing trust fund. That could be a key to future development of housing on the part of the city. How can you begin to salt away money? What are the sources of funding you can creatively pursue? Mansion tax and second-home tax? I'm not the expert, but you do have experts. The city needs to plant a flag called Housing for All. It'll be easy to say, well, we can't fight Sacramento, and maybe and maybe not, but we need to focus on the resources that we have control of and begin. When I was in office myself, another colleague and I used to go toe-to-toe with developers of large rental projects to try to get more than 10 or 15% affordability. If we were successful, we felt really good, but we are way beyond that measure of success. And I want to be clear, I'm talking housing affordability. I'm not using the affordable housing terminology for a reason, because it has a certain connotation that we're only interested in providing housing for low-income, the low-income sector. We need to provide housing affordability for all sectors. We have a balanced community and we need to keep it balanced, and that means working to provide housing for everyone. Thank you.
Rogelio Delgado?
I have a red speaker.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment and we will move on to the consent calendar.
Mayor, if I could just add some information real quick. This is another new item that wasn't on the City Managers' Report that just, I think, just got put up. So on the hot topics for the Surfliner Inn project, the team has been working on putting together a frequently asked question section that I believe was at the request of the council, and so I'm sure there will be future updates, but the first version of that is now up on the website under the Surfliner Inn Hot Topics button, and it's at the very, very top of the page. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
Thank you. Consent calendar, I'll go ahead and open up public comment on items six through 10. 10. Seeing no slips, anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion for the consent calendar.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held March 24, 2025, and the special meetings held March 25, 2025, and March 31, 2025, to receive and file the expenditures for the period beginning March 17, 2025, and ending April 4, 2025, to authorize Public Works Director to advertise the notice inviting bids for the Carpinteria High School Area Crosswalk Safety Improvements Project, to ratify the city manager's execution of Amendment Number 4, Attachment A, to the Agreement for Consultant Services between the City of Carpinteria and WSP USA Environment and Infrastructure Incorporated, to extend the term of the agreement to December 31, 2026, for continued planning and environmental services in support of the city's coastal land use plan and general plan update, and to approve and adopt Resolution Number 6386 updating the city's master fee schedules.
And I'll second that.
Thank you, we have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please, Brian.
Councilmember Nomura?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Solarsano?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor?
Aye.
And Mayor Alarcon?
Aye.
Great. We'll now move on to item number 11, which is the Resolution Number 6383 approving the road maintenance and rehabilitation account fiscal year 2025 through 2026 project list.
Good evening, council. Tonight, for your consideration, is Resolution 6383 adopting the road maintenance and rehabilitation account project list for fiscal year 2526. To provide some background, on April 28, 2017, the governor signed Senate Bill 1, which is known as the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. SP1 increased fuel taxes and vehicle registration fees to address basic road maintenance, rehabilitation, and critical safety needs for state highways and local streets and roads. The RMRA funding must be used for road maintenance and rehabilitation, safety projects, railroad gate separations, traffic control devices, pedestrian and bicycle safety projects, transit facilities, and drainage and stormwater capture projects in conjunction with other allowable projects. To ensure accountability and transparency, SP1 requires the city to submit a list of proposed projects to be funded to the California Transportation Commission by July 1, 2025, prior to receiving any funding. All proposed projects to receive funding must be adopted by resolution by the city council at a regular public meeting. As such, Exhibit 1 of Resolution Number 6383 identifies a proposed project list, which includes the Carpinteria Avenue Bridge Replacement Project and the 2023 pavement rehabilitation project. The city is expecting to receive an estimated $344,000, or $344,778 in RMRA funding for fiscal year 2526. This is about a 2.41% increase from the prior year. With that, the staff recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 6383 for the road maintenance rehabilitation account for fiscal year 2526 project list. And that concludes the report.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council? Nope, okay. I'll go ahead and open up public comment. Seeing no speaker slips, anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Mayor, we have no Zoom speakers.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 6383 as read by title only.
Second that.
Great, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Do you have a real quick question?
Yes.
It's not going to affect any of the voting. Question would be prioritizing the list. Could you give us a little briefing on how that was done?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Nomura. In terms of what is before you in the RMRA list, just for that clarification that the question is for, so the RMRA lists, these particular projects are basically the two capital projects that, one, are eligible for RMRA funds, so that's one. And, two, these projects, these two projects, are basically carried over from fiscal year 2425 to 2526. So, as far as meeting the eligibility requirements of RMRA, these are your two projects before you.
Thank you. Been asked that by a few people, so I want to confirm that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 12, which is public hearing at the request of the City of Carpinteria to, one, adopt modified ordinance number 788 and 789 on a revised reading, making changes to Carpinteria Municipal Code Title 14, zoning, adding clarifying language to Chapter 14.04, general provisions, Section 14.04.030, adding Chapter 14.19, RMU residential mixed use, and adding Chapter 14.51, objective design standards, and adopt Resolution Number 6379, and determine that none of the conditions have occurred or exist as set forth in California Environmental Quality Act. I did not read those last two fully, but I can if you need me to.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Alarcon and council. I apologize, I forgot my nameplate, so I'll announce that I'm Mindy Fogg, Principal Planner for Community Development Department. I have a short presentation this evening, because you've already seen this project so many times, and so it's back for one more reading. I won't go over this whole process again. You've seen this flow chart a number of times also, but I will highlight where we left off last. Your council conducted two hearings last fall, which were the first and second readings of the Housing Element zoning amendments, and you, those were then approved in January by HCD, and they certified our housing element, and then it went to the Coastal Commission. And on March 15, the Coastal Commission conditionally certified those amendments with three suggested So, the modifications they are proposing, they do affect ordinances 788 and 789, which are the residential mixed-use zone ordinance and the objective design standards ordinance. There were, the other two ordinances, 790 and 791, were not proposed to be modified at all, so those are already certified, and that's where we applied the RMU zone to those Phase 1 selected sites. So, just to remind you what these ordinances are that are back for modification and revised second reading. The 788 is the RMU zone, which requires mixed use or multifamily, and in the downtown T, it must be mixed use, and it requires a density between 20 and 25 dwelling units per acre, and allows for ministerial permitting, and requires adherence to our objective design standards. So, for this ordinance, 788, the Coastal Commission only proposes one small modification just to correct the timing that is required for our final notice of action issuance to them. So, that was really just a correction on that ordinance. The other ordinance, 789, that's the one that has our newly implemented objective design standards that would apply in the RMU zone. This one actually had much more extensive modifications. I apologize for the wordiness of these slides, just wanted to get the full modification on there. But in summary, it just clarifies that any adverse impacts to coastal resources must still be avoided, and it also compels the city to return within five years with objective standards for coastal resource protection, is basically what that all says. And then the final modification that they suggest to us is also in the same ordinance. And in a nutshell, it says that if these design standards in this ordinance conflict with any of the coastal protection standards, then the most restrictive standard would apply. So, staff has reviewed these and found them to be acceptable changes, didn't really substantively change any of our housing element goals. And in their letter to us, action letter, they also just outlined the final steps, with this tonight being the first step, which is that we're recommending that we accept their proposed modifications, and if you are agreeable to that, then after that, the executive director will review tonight's action, report it to the Coastal Commission, and file it with the Natural Resources Agency. So, our staff recommendation is to adopt the modified ordinances 788 and 789 on a revised second reading, and to adopt the resolution accepting their modifications. So, that was a real short summary of it, and staff's available if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Questions from council?
So, in terms of the language that the Coastal Commission is asking for having a local coastal program amendment, where does, what is the reasoning behind them asking that to be added, and then, and, you know, giving us kind of this window in which to respond?
Oh, the five years to return, oh, thank you. So, what they're asking, I guess they also added this to the county's housing reasons too, so I think it's become standard for them. But what they're asking is that since, since now jurisdictions are doing objective standards to approve development, they would like us to add objective standards to the extent possible to protect resources at the same time. So, wherever we can do, you know, standard buffer from habitat resource, or anything standard that would require coastal access, or satisfactory parking, then that would be that kind of amendment that we would come back with. We are actually working on those things already, just through our general plan update and coastal plan update. Anything to add?
Thanks, Mindy. Yeah, I was just going to add, you know, we have some of these objective standards on the books already, right? So, we have a required minimum buffer from a wetland or creek, but there's other coastal resources, maybe like parking, or like a buffer from environmentally sensitive habitat that right now is kind of a little bit more subjective or discretionary, and so that's an area where maybe Coastal Commission would want us to go back and see if we can recraft or redefine those standards to be applied in a more objective manner. And I think this is a response to what we're seeing at the state legislature in terms of, you know, local jurisdiction and discretionary decision-making authority over housing projects slowly being whittled away. And so, I think Coastal Commission's anticipating that trend's going to continue, and with that in mind, they're urging jurisdictions to also amend their regulations to include more of these objective standards, to make sure these coastal resources remain protected while meeting the, you know, the spirit or the intent of these state housing laws of, you know, streamlining the process.
And then it sounds like they're making that same exact requirement of like, of the county's housing element, and maybe even other cities as well?
Exactly. The modification language that was imposed on us is almost word-for-word identical to what was put on the county's recent housing element reasons.
No, I appreciate the clarification. And then just one other question. The additional language that they have talking about when there's a conflict between the objective standards set forth, the more restrictive objective standards shall apply, what would an example of that be, when that occurrence would happen, since they want to add in that language?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Solarsano, through the mayor. What we were just talking about a second ago, you know, setbacks, standard setbacks, I think what comes to mind the most often is our creek setbacks, and a good example where maybe design, objective design standard would conflict, would be where we have a requirement for walking paths. And there's, there's supposed to be a certain width in the objective design standards. So, perhaps if, if we say in there that you have to have the walking path a certain width throughout and accessible from certain things, but there's a creek buffer, then we could probably either narrow the walking path or redesign that walking path, because the coastal resource protection would take precedence.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, because those were the pieces of language that jumped out at me, but I wasn't sure why they were added, but, so I understand that much better now, thank you.
By the way, that is, that is kind of standard language when you have multiple, I would say, challenges that you're facing with those design elements.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? No, okay. Thank you for your presentation. I'll go ahead and open up public comment. Seeing none, and do we have anyone on Brian? Anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll move that we adopt modified ordinance number 788 and 789 as read by titles only, and also adopt Resolution 679, and also determine that none of the conditions have occurred or exist as set forth in sequel guidelines, Section 15162, to require the preparation of a supplemental or subsequent EIR, et cetera. Or should I read the whole thing?
Vice Mayor Solarsano through the mayor, I think that you can just say as stated in the staff report for the recommended.
A stated in the staff report, thank you.
I would second that.
It's in the record already, so, thank you.
Great, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. So, before we move on to item 13, I'll just ask for a quick five-minute break, and we will reconvene. Thank you.
But it seems like that's an opportunity that that maybe things would change after a year.
Yes, Councilmember Clark through the mayor. So one of the things that we changed this year from the year previously as we moved to, you know, we changed annual work plan to the strategic plan and and change getting away from the word annual was because we are now setting those those goals and priorities for a two-year time. Similar to what LaSette said regarding though the budget, there's still going to be these check-ins. So we're still going to check in at the end of each year. We're going to look at the progress of our goals and well, you know, it's always amendable by the council, but the idea is is that this these this strategic plan will align with the two-year budget and will also align with the election cycle. So as a as a new council comes in, they'll be setting their new priorities, which will also align with the budget. So for all those reasons, I also think it it's a better driver for what the council is trying to achieve as well.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Yeah, quick question also for staff. On this one then, the I I suppose the Finance Committee will also be aware of these things prior to any things being carried forward or moving around?
Yes, we can do that as well.
Yeah, that would be essential, especially if we're going to two-year. So at least we'd be be kept abreast of that.
Yes.
That's okay with you guys.
Of course.
Yes.
You're the one doing it.
I have a quick question. So then it sounds like other than the one budget document, instead of getting one each year, we have one for two years. But other than that, in terms of the information that's being provided and presented to council and to the public, that will still continue to be disseminated on a on a regular basis, the way it is now, right? It sounds like?
Yes, that's correct. So we'll still have the mid-cycle and then the mid-years. So there'll still be four, four, we're going to come to council four times and as obviously as needed, if there's a budget appropriation needed in between that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Forgive me for not having a form. I'll fill it out. Council and staff. I just wanted to make one comment about carryovers and urge a bit more robust discussion. Maybe maybe it belongs in the Finance Committee. Carryovers are a slippery slope, and I think it deserves a little detail as to how it'll work. The pace of spending leading up to the carryover, for example. I mean, if you spend a dollar and you got 10 more to go, is that really a carryover? Or if you spent $9 and you got a dollar to go? So there's a little bit of, you know, I think, discipline that would be warranted on a carryover. Thanks.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other speaker slips, anyone on Zoom? Brian?
Mayor, we have no Zoom speakers.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council, and I'll actually ask staff, maybe if you can share a little bit more about the carryover dollars and just the pace of spending and in terms of how that'll be monitored.
It will be on a case-by-case when we're closing the fiscal year-end and seeing the balances on the purchase orders. And then that's the discussion that each department head is going to have with the city manager. And at that point, he either gonna approve it to get carried over or or not. But at the second fiscal year, there is no carryover. The budget, because you are approving two years. So you're basically saying that we have two years to finish what we're we came to council for. And that's why that carryover allows us to continue our work. And I have to come back to council to say, hey, we still have 20,000 on the agreement. Now we need another appropriation on the 20,000, because you already approved that original one. But on the second year, there is no carryover. We start with a new budget document again.
Mayor, also add, as mentioned earlier, all of this is, as you know, sitting on the Finance Committee is always well communicated through there. And since I've been here, I can't even think of a project that we've managed to get just within a single fiscal year of 12 months. So most of this is just in line with the normal project cycle anyways and how long it takes to complete a project.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay. I will ask for a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 6387, approving the budget and fiscal policy.
I'll second that.
Great. We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is item number 14, which is the adoption of Resolution Number 6385 concerning the formation of the Ad-Hoc E-Conveyance Committee and appointment of up to two council members to the committee.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. The formation of this committee stems from the ongoing safety concerns involving collisions between e-bike riders, drivers, and pedestrians within our community. A special meeting was held on March 4, 2025, bringing together key stakeholders, including the Carpinteria Unified School District, the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department, I'm sorry, the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. Forgive me. Santa Barbara, sorry, I'm very nervous. My apologies. California State Parks, Move SB, and COSMAB to discuss proactive, community-based solutions. The consensus from that meeting was clear. A more structured approach is needed to promote safe behavior and encourage the shared and respectful use of public roadways and sidewalks. The item before you tonight proposes the formation of the Ad-Hoc E-Conveyance Committee. This committee would work closely with city staff and agency partners to shape thoughtful, actionable safety programs and initiatives. Some of the primary goals may include community education on safe practices for all roadway users, a public awareness campaign around traffic safety, and guidance on enforcement strategies related to improper bike and e-bike uses. This ad hoc committee would also serve in advisory capacity, helping staff develop program recommendations that will ultimately come back to this council for review and potential adoption. While there is no immediate additional cost expected at this time, the work of the committee would be supported by existing city staff, and any future financial impacts would be presented to this council for approval before implementation. This effort represents a proactive step towards safer streets and greater community involvement in how we manage and plan for active transportation in Carpinteria. With that, staff recommends adopting Resolution Number 6385 and appointing up to two council members. Thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. So thank you for your report. Appreciate it. A couple of quick questions. So how would this new group, this this ad hoc committee interface with some of the stakeholders that were part of that original meeting that you mentioned? Would it be something where, is there any involvement at all, or is this completely separate?
Sure. So they would be more than welcome to attend these ad hoc committee meetings. And we do want to stress that this is a collaborative effort. So this definitely isn't the city by itself. It really is the work of all partners working together. And it's being proposed as an ad hoc committee primarily because it serves a single purpose, and then it can be diminished once or dissolved once the work is complete.
Thank you. And then we I know in that initial bigger stakeholder meeting, we had talked about having an e-bike safety week or something like that type of community outreach. Would that be something that would go through this ad hoc committee, or would that be something that would be discussed again by like the external stakeholders? Do we do we know?
Sure. So it would be primarily discussed during this ad hoc committee meeting and then brought forward again to council.
Perfect. And then just one comment is that I really appreciate that the staff report focused on both e-bike rider and also driver and pedestrian education, because I think it's something where there's a whole ecosystem of moving parts involved here. And it's I'm glad that we're not just focusing on on e-bikes and and having them be more aware of what they have to do, but also what drivers and pedestrians have to be aware of too. So thank you.
Few questions for me, too. This is for staff specific. We put this ad hoc committee together up there. I understand the idea of it, but it does not actually officially recognize the specific partners. So that would be one thing I would suggest or recommend doing, because without the structure, we become kind of a messenger without really being able to move a message along. So I think that should be part of the official development or formation of the ad hoc committee, having those. The other one, too, it doesn't really give us a specific goal or objective on what this ad hoc committee is going to do. In other words, ad hoc is a temporary one, but if we don't have what the specific outcomes are of this one, this ad hoc committee could keep going forever. There's always, unfortunately, going to be accidents. But if we were to quote minimize it to a certain percentage, I think that would be something that would be in line with the development of the ad hoc committee.
Councilmember Nomura through the mayor, if I can jump in and just try to answer one of those questions, even though it really wasn't posed as a question about kind of why we're choosing to staff or why the recommendation staffs the committee with just two council members and not the broader community. The reason there is that if we include committee members who are not council members, we're required to comply with the Brown Act. And so it makes it much more administratively difficult to plan meetings and to schedule meetings, because all of those meetings have to be in person. So with the flexibility of an ad hoc committee, we have the, you know, the ability to, at times and when necessary, meet virtually or meet without noticing an agenda and all convening in one spot. If, for example, there was the desire of the city to hold a notice meeting, they could, of course, do that, but the every meeting would not be required to comply with the Brown Act. So that's the reason that it was proposed or recommended to be staffed in that way.
So what you're saying then is that with the other interested parties specifically, Brown Act would then include them as part of the, well, the Brown Act consideration? It doesn't make sense to me that way, because we're different entities. We're a different organization.
So Councilmember Nomura through the mayor, if I understand your question correctly, I'll say yes. If we were to include other committee, other members of the public or interested parties on the committee as official committee members, there is a an attorney general opinion out there that says, it may even be a government code provision, that then makes the committee itself subject to the Brown Act. I agree, it doesn't make a lot of logical sense in terms of we're not increasing, you know, the committee members on the committee to a quorum of the council. But that's just what the what the law does say.
So so my question then, I think I understand most of that, would be, say, for example, we wanted to include the Sheriff's Department. We want to include the school district, groups like that, and maybe the downtown groups also. We can't list them as part of the team or part of this committee. They would have to be at large, correct?
Councilmember Nomura through the mayor. So no, they would not be committee members. So the committee members would be made up of two council members.
Correct.
And then there would be interested parties who would be allowed, invited to attend the committee members. And they would provide input to the committee members. But it would be the committee members who would actually formulate the recommendations and then make the recommendations to the council.
That part I do understand. Okay. But in identifying these groups, it would be, I would say, somewhat specific or essential that we know who the players are and how those are going to be, I would say, invited. I don't know how you would handle that part of it, then.
I can answer. So Councilmember Nomura through the mayor, this is, I see this running very similarly to the Senior Services Planning Committee that we had with Vice Mayor Solarsano and then Councilmember Lee. We had those two were the primary committee members, but we also had a working group of seniors, Inc., Girls, Inc., and several other groups. So mentioned in the report is the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department, Move Santa Barbara, and others. We've already met with them at a staff level and already beginning to get their ideas going. So they they've already committed to being a part of this. So I'm I'm certain that all the names listed there in the report will be involved when possible. And then in terms of the, I think you mentioned earlier about the the actual goals, and so beyond just developing recommendations for council's consideration, because wanting to take into consideration what the stakeholders might offer, we didn't want to basically predetermine exactly what the deliverable would be, other than to say that it would be recommendations, you know, related to e-conveyance and overall safety in the in the community. But the the recommendations itself to the council would be the final deliverable. What those recommendations actually are is yet to be determined.
Okay. Again, my concern with that, unless there's identified goals and objectives, it may be difficult, I would say, not knowing what the outcomes are going to be. That's my only concern there.
Councilmember Nomura through the mayor. So all of the recommendations, to my understanding, and I'm happy for any of the team members to jump in, will will be related to things related to e-bikes, not just e-bikes. So this could be vehicles and just creating different behaviors regarding safety. And they will all be safety-related. That may also include outreach, education, presentations through the school district and things like that.
Okay. Thank you.
What if, to sort of address that, we sort of changed the name of the ad hoc group to the Ad-Hoc E-Conveyance Safety and Community Outreach Committee? I mean, it just like ties the room together a little bit. Because that, both the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Nomura, they asked the same questions that I had, which was like, what are we doing? So I think if we have a little more direction, we'll be much more effective.
I have a question. So or comment in terms of just additional benchmarks. So Section 3, and it is a little vague. So in terms of like, it outlines A through C, which is raise awareness and educate the public on safe practices for e-bike cyclist drivers and pedestrians. And then B is the collaboration piece. And then C is to evaluate the effectiveness of initiatives and report findings. Is are there additional goals that you would like to see in written into this ad hoc committee? More specificity?
I like the fact that it's written kind of within the boundaries of these concepts, but that it's not super targeted, because I figure we might not know, or whoever's on the committee might not know what a best practice would be until they've, you know, talked with all the stakeholders and had multiple meetings. So but it would still have to be under this umbrella of like, yeah, like you said, raising awareness and education, collaborating, evaluating effectiveness. So I I'm pretty comfortable with the language as as it is. I think it's it will be helpful for the committee's work.
Yeah, I agree with Vice Mayor Solarsano. I see it as primarily education-based recommendations becoming out of this.
Quick question for staff also. Have we looked into the potential of actually having a consultant that has done this at the state level also as one of the options?
Councilmember Nomura through the mayor. We haven't yet, but that might be one of the recommendations that could come out of the committee. And we also did, you know, back to the earlier comment, Councilmember Mayor, about the different name changes. We are happy to consider any name changes that the council has. When we originally named the committee and we met with some of the stakeholders, it said e-bike, ad hoc committee. And they they, especially our stakeholders from Move Santa Barbara, didn't want it to center around e-bikes, because they're not necessarily right, the ones at fault. One of the most recent accidents that we had involving an e-bike was the vehicle's faults. And so more about, they wanted it to be more general. We went to e-conveyance. We considered active transportation ad hoc committee. The only issue was is that then it becomes a little bit gray for the community to understand what the focus of the committee is going to be. And so, you know, we all that to say, we considered a number of different names and and the one presented as an alternative, we would be open to, as long as, of course, the committee, right, knew what the focus of it was. And I think that did capture that and and happy to consider, you know, any alternatives.
The reason I brought that up, there's been about three or four cities that have been in print talking about the successes that they've had with specific models and ways to go in that direction. My my concern with it with ad hoc, they can probably go that route, get that information from them. But the, I would say, the quickest, most efficient way would be to copy somebody else's effective model and try and convert that to something we could adopt here in Carpinteria. Now, the ad hoc committee could do that, but I just didn't want to waste a lot of resources, time. If it's financial, then it would be easy for the ad hoc committee to pick up, do the research on that one. Those are just my questions and comments, trying to make it as easy and quick as possible.
Yeah, Councilmember Nomura through the mayor. We'll absolutely consider all those things. One of the things that we have noted is that there have been some differences amongst even some of our neighboring cities and and some discussions that I've had, you know, State Street, for example, has kind of become a raceway where the city of Carpinteria doesn't necessarily have that exact issue. And then other cities have taken maybe a strictly educational approach. Others have taken more of an enforcement approach. You know, I've heard from stakeholders more of a desire to look for something that's somewhere in the middle of that spectrum. And so I do definitely think that there's, we don't want to reinvent the wheel here, and there's going to be some general models that we're going to be looking to follow. And Move Santa Barbara is one of the stakeholders that provides a lot of that support. And also, I think that the stakeholders in the ad hoc committee will help us define where we might want to fall in that in that spectrum of education and enforcement, and then specific details related to our city. I remember one of the unique things that came up during our initial meeting that you you wouldn't hear about in the city of Santa Barbara is about people biking through maybe the sensitive habitat areas like our Salt Marsh specifically. So these are some unique things that I think would come out of these recommendations that we might not be able to grab from other agencies. But point taken, and we will definitely consider all those models.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay. The other part of this is to select council members. I'd be happy to open up public comment first and then bring it back to the council if that's.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and do that. I'll go ahead and open up public comment. I don't have any speaker slips. No one in the audience? Anyone on Brian? Anyone on Zoom? Brian?
Mayor, we have no Zoom speakers.
Thank you. Okay, I'll officially close public comment and bring it back to the council. And I'll first ask if there's any interest to join this committee.
I would be interested, but also if somebody else is very passionately interested, I'm happy to step back.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm definitely interested. I I feel the same way. Like, I feel like I have stakeholders in my household and also around me all the time. So feels like something that I could be a good participant in, but I'm open.
Awesome. Great. Anyone else?
I think the two that have both first expressed their interest should be the ones. They're at the right generation. I think the two of us guys are on this and a little bit on the older side to relate to the kids.
Well, I don't I don't mean to complicate this.
Not at all.
But I too have interest in being a part of the committee. I think I've been able to, similar to usually, I have some stakeholders in my house. But yeah, so I I think I'd love to continue to follow this. And I think that really working collaboratively with our stakeholders is a really important piece to create an outreach, you know, strategy that works really well for entire community. Yeah.
I'm I'm happy to step back if you. Are you saying that you would want to be?
Yes.
Okay, I'm happy to step.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. If we can have a motion, please?
So moved.
First and?
Second.
Second? We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Yes.
And Mayor, did we keep the existing name? Yes.
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 Yes, no change.
Okay, great. Thank you. We will now move on to item number 15, which is approve and adopt Resolution Number 6384, updating the city's Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Department program and facility fee schedule. Good evening. Just one moment as I get the presentation set up. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. Tonight, Ryan Benson, our Management Analyst for General Government, and I will be presenting to you the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Facility and Program Fee Recommendations, or Fee Study and Facility and Program Fee Recommendations. The proposed fee schedule, if approved, would go into effect on July 1, 2025, giving us time to implement the fees into our recreation management software and to provide notice to the public of the fee increases. The proposed fee schedule is attached in your staff report. One thing I would like to note is that if approved, the notes section of this document would be removed, and of course, the current fees would be replaced with the new and approved fees.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Jeanette. So the team and I, we spent time and effort conducting an internal analysis of the Parks Department from a revenue and expense point of view, with the aim of identifying cost recovery opportunities for the fee-based programs. We also included in our analysis overall cost recovery data and percentages, which is something you'll see on this next slide here. So this one, this gives us a snapshot of last fiscal year's revenue and expenditure amounts for all parks-related funds and accounts, namely, Tideland's Trust Fund, the Library Fund, Parks Maintenance Fund, and the Recreation Services Fund, which is the fund that contains most of the fee-based programs of the Parks Department. This analysis culminated into the subsidy percentage that you see to the right, which is 51%. This 51% was a number we were keeping in mind as we were thinking about cost recovery opportunities for the department. The aim of today's discussion is to help close this gap between the revenues and the expense. Okay?
So the department receives funds from multiple sources, the primary fund being the Recreation Services Fund, which includes the programs you see here on the screen. The library is not included in this fund, as it has its own fund, and the Parks Fund, which funds the maintenance of the parks, is also not included in the Recreation Services Fund, but we will be discussing it later. You can see here, when only analyzing just the Recreation Services Fund, which again includes all the programs you just saw, but does not include the library or senior services, there's a 50% cost recovery and approximately $500,000 in general fund subsidy.
So far, we have given you the cost recovery overview of the whole Parks Department. You saw that in the slide. We've identified the fund that contains the majority of the parks' fees. But now we're going to look at the fee-based programs one by one. So kind of doing a deeper dive here. We're going to start with the community pool, which includes the pool operations, pool rentals, swim lessons, and our swim team. So here is the overall revenue and expense analysis for the pool. A largely subsidized program, which is which has 45% cost recoveries, you'll see. The expenses include staffing, janitorial services, maintenance, program supplies, just to name a few examples. Revenue that's generated from the fees are like the pool use and rental fees like that. So those are the revenues there. So here is kind of a good breakdown of the revenue generated from the pool. What's notable is that the swim team tuitions and pool rentals, shown here as pool special events, are the two largest revenue generators, making up about 50% of the total revenue. This is a revenue breakdown, but just in another view. So the graphs and tools just kind of help tell a story of how of the how effective the programs are from a revenue point of view. Okay. And Jeanette?
And a key component of this analysis was the market rate study, where Ryan surveyed multiple other agencies, including Ventura, Santa Barbara, and more, to see where the city of Carpinteria falls within the market. The market study is a key component of the analysis, as recreation fees are most commonly set by what the market can bear. As you can imagine, the survey is definitely a bit of an art and a science, as each agency does things just a little bit differently. So it's often not comparing apples to apples. Lab swim is one example example where it
Lap swim is one example, example where it is a very straightforward, direct comparison. However, for swim lessons, it's a bit more complicated. Factors that need to be addressed are how many lessons are included in the price shown, how many minutes are each lesson, and how many children are in each group. So for this and, and other examples, as you will see as we go on, how, um, Ryan broke it down to as close of an equal comparison as possible. And here, breaking down the swim lessons to per thirty-minute session for analysis. For our pool fees, you can see we are just slightly above the surveyed average for pool programs. When analyzing fees, we noticed the fees charged for, to see USD for pool rentals are lower than those charged to outside organizations, including other swim teams and scuba programs, for example, uh, for pool use. Because of this, we are recommending an incremental increase to the fees charged to see USD to, over time, get them closer to what outside organizations are paying for use of the pool. From our research, we found that fees charged to C U S D were last increased in twenty twenty-two. We are also recommending the removal of the all-day rental rate in favor of charging a consistent hourly rate. In reviewing our pool rentals, we found that the all-day rate stops being cost-effective for the city after about six hours of use. The cost to operate the pool does not decrease over time. So running the facility an hour, seven or eight of a rental costs just as much as it did in those earlier hours. By allowing a flat all-day rate, the city is effectively losing revenue on those extended rentals. Charging by the hour ensures that rental fees cover the actual costs of operations and help us maintain financial sustainability.
I have, I'm sorry, I have a question.
Of course.
Regarding the pool. Um, in terms of the revenue with the swim team tuitions making up twenty-eight percent and pool special event twenty-two percent, there's only so many hours, right, in a week or in a month? Like, what does that equate to in terms of like, hours or pool usage time?
Yeah, that's a, a great question. Um, I might look for some quick math help as, um, on this one. But so for our um, CAC, our Carpentry Aquatics Club, which is our swim team and water polo team, they're in the pool every day, Monday through Friday, from roughly three to five P M. Um, and so that would be one. And what was the, and then the other one you mentioned was.
Pool special event.
The pool special event. So that one will be a little bit trickier to analyze because the pool, pool special event includes all of the pool rentals. So largely, the largest contributor to this would be the school, the CUSD usage of the pool. They're in the pool roughly Monday through Friday from five to eight P M. Um, there's some additional rentals, uh, you know, if they have an away meet or game, they wouldn't be there that day. Or if they have a meet or a game, they often rent longer. Um, there's also outside rentals that would fall into this pool um, special event category, like scuba or any private organizations. Um, Santa Barbara Swim Club often rents the pool on Sundays for swim meets, and they will do like, long day rentals. Um, so again, not being able to do the mental math all that quickly, it's a significant portion of the time um, versus, you know, the other uses of the pools, lap swim, morning to mid-afternoon, swim lessons, they're just a few hours for a few days during summer. Um, so it's definitely the pool special events by far the largest use of the pool as well as um, revenue generator in addition to the swim team.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions on the pool? Um, I had that same question, but on the line item, I think it, you have it as CUSD exclusive facility use. So that's what is the special events, basically is what we're saying.
That would be ex, yes, um, Councilmember, Mayor, through the mayor, you are correct. Uh, the CUSD exclusive use would be equal to an exclusive use um, also here as a pool special event for uh, swim meet or any exclusive use of the pool. We're also recommending, I can um, back up. So the CUSD exclusive use, we're recommending from two hundred an hour to two twenty. Um, the, the cost for other renters is down there at the bottom at three hundred an hour for the same thing.
Got it. So if Santa Barbara Swim Club comes, they pay three hundred, but CUSD pays two.
Yes, that is correct. Yeah, that's a great question.
Okay. So we also, um, we also analyzed the Veterans Memorial Building, um, or Vets Hall from a cost recovery standpoint. Uh, the next slide here, this is an overall revenue and expense analysis for the Vets Hall for um, last fiscal year. Uh, this program had a forty-four percent cost recovery. Uh, the one oh nine thousand worth of expenses were allocated to staffing, about fifty percent, maintenance and janitorial, about thirty, and the rest to utilities and supplies. Excuse me, um, the forty, uh, eight thousand in revenue mainly came from uh, rental fees. So that's that from cost recovery. Um, so we did take a survey of other cities um, and compared rental rates for um, comparable rental spaces um, to the Veterans Hall. Uh, we went as granulars comparing the prices per square foot and saw that the price per square foot average is about two times higher than what we currently charge here. Uh, from what the data shows, it seems like there's room to increase rental rates for cost recovery purposes. Uh, but just one thing to note, the survey only considered the price per um, square footage, not factors like quality of the building or upkeep of the facilities or amenities like ocean views. But overall, uh, this survey data does help justify potential fee increases to match the market. Um, so this two times uh, higher differential in rental price is also true if staff added the kitchen to the rental um, of the room, which is most often the case when people rent out the Veterans Hall. Uh, so interesting enough, though, looking at the Veterans Hall, um, just the small meeting room rental, the rates are more than what other cities are charging, so it's something that Jeanette is keeping in mind.
So we are recommending increases for fees charged for use of the Veterans Hall. As Ryan mentioned, our hall rentals are slight, are significantly lower than others, but our meeting room rentals are higher. As you know, the Veterans Hall is very popular and heavily used by the community and private rentals and our own programs for AgeWell, the library, and more. The meeting room is almost exclusively used for AgeWell and library programs, so if we are renting it out, we want to make sure we are recovering full costs. One thing to note is currently the Vets Hall campus is only serviced by janitorial three days a week. And with the increased usage over the past year, we are asking for an increased janitorial services, which will of course come with added expenses. You'll notice we are recommending a twenty-nine percent increase for hall-only rentals, and we're also introducing a new venue fee. This fee reflects the way the space is actually being used. Most renters are not just renting the hall, but also the, they're also renting the kitchen, the reception room, and the courtyard. So what may look like a forty-four percent increase is actually the result of combining all of those amenities into one simplified hourly rate. It's important to note that previously, the courtyard wasn't being charged for at all, uh, despite being beautiful and functional outdoor space that adds great value to the events. So while the total fee, fee is higher, it now better reflects the full use of the venue and provides more clarity and consistency for renters. We are also proposing an increase to the meeting room fee, and we are formalizing the staffing fee, which is to pay for our parks and facility attendants to be on-site during the entire rental, including setup and breakdown. They assist with setup, breakdown, provide customer service throughout the event, and are able to ensure renters are following the rules and the venue is cleaned and locked up at the end of an event. We are also recommending instituting a five-dollar check processing fee for all rentals to cover the cost of staff time and materials for cutting the checks. Although it is listed here under Vets Hall rentals, I do want to clarify, this would be for all rentals throughout the department, including like the barbecue and picnic rentals and any program refunds that would require a check to be cut.
I have a question. Um, with the Vets Hall and the increased fees, how will, and the Vets Hall might need some maintenance, how will the increased fees support with ongoing maintenance of the hall?
Yes, that's, that's a great question, Mayor. Uh, so the first and immediate uh, way to address it would be increasing the janitorial services, which we think will greatly help, um, you know, just improve the quality of the rooms and the cleanliness. And then all the revenues generated go into the general fund, which could then be allocated to our Parks Maintenance Fund and our Facilities Maintenance Fund to reinvest it back into the hall for those much-needed improvements.
Any other questions? No. Okay.
All right, so we're going to take a look at our very popular Junior Lifeguards program. Uh, we found that the expenses of Ju, the Junior Lifeguards program um, came from staffing, supplies, travel. Uh, they're pretty much covered by the amount of revenues that come in. Uh, that's a ninety-nine point seven cost recovery for this program, which is pretty good. This gives us the idea that J G um, is healthy and it's a good service that's provided to the public. Uh, we found that one reason this program has good cost recovery is that the fees that we've been charging have been incrementally um, increasing year to year to cover the rising cost of supplies and staff. Uh, this is something that's important that um, I think Jeanette is wanting to keep, stay intentional about for the future years. Um, so as far as pricing is concerned, the average of the city um, that, uh, with similar pro, sorry, with programs similar in program length, um, Carpinteria is tens of dollars more than what other cities are charging. So that's something we found out in the survey. And on to Jeanette.
And as Ryan just mentioned, to keep up with the rising costs um, and increased staff wages, we are proposing to increase the program fee for the summer of twenty twenty-six to six hundred and seventy-five dollars. This summer's program, if summer of twenty twenty-five, is priced at six hundred and fifty dollars, and we are not recommending increasing that price for this year's program. Um, we've opened registration, as many of you know, um, and so we're going to keep the six hundred and fifty for this year, and we're recommending that for next year, which would fall within this timeline. We increase the price um, just to keep up with the rising cost of staff um, and supplies.
Uh, one comment to, to add, uh, Mayor, is uh, one of the things that I know we looked at when we increased our fees way back, uh, is that we, the city of Carpinteria has maintained a ten-to-one ratio in terms of staff to participants, whereas some, um, I think the allowable is twenty-to-one and some other agencies have done that. So going back and comparing apples to apples, I think this is one of those cases where um, in terms of the quality of service we provide and the ten-to-one ratio uh, is reflected there in the cost.
Can I ask a quick question? How, in thinking about fees, has there ever been a consideration for a resident and non-resident charge for our junior lifeguards? I know there's a lot of families that come from out of town to participate in our program.
Yes, Councilmember, Mayor, through the mayor, that's a great question. It's definitely something we've discussed um, and have really contemplated for all of our fees. It is um, common in cities to have a resident, non-resident. At this point in time, um, we determine the administrative burden of managing that might outweigh, you know, the, the pros of implementing it. But if we, if we hear that residents aren't able to get into our programs, they're not able to get into junior guards because it's full, they're not able to get into swim lessons, it's definitely would be, you know, the next step. Um, having done that in many past agencies, I know it can be difficult to um, you know, require people to provide proof of residency year after year and tracking it. Um, so it can get a bit complicated, but definitely um, a common practice and something that's on our radar and would be a next step, like I said, if, if our programs were becoming really impacted and our residents were able to participate. It's a wonderful question.
I have a question, just to get a better sense of how junior guards runs. Can you share a little bit about like, how long it is? How many hours the kids are in the uh, lifeguard's care or the city's care? How did?
Yes, so I can give an estimate. I apologize to Lexi and my staff if I get some of these hours wrong. Um, so it's about a seven-week program, Monday through Friday, roughly from um, nine to noon. Our staff are there a bit before and a bit after. Um, and they provide, you know, the supervision and programming and quite a lot during the week. They also go to competitions at other um, locations, so those days would be longer. Um, we also host a fabulous uh, competition, the uh, Carp Comp, which is a longer day. And then we provide a field trip option as well. And that's just a, a pass-through cost to participants who want to go um, this summer, as was last summer. It will be out, a day trip out to the islands.
Got it. And then just last question, just to confirm, we do not offer any scholarships at this point in time?
So at this point in time, the city itself, that is correct, we do not offer scholarships, although it is um, on my wish list of items to tackle. However, um, the Carpinteria Summerland Fire District has been very generous. They're um, providing three scholarships this year, and um, it was just fabulous. The minute we put the email out, we had two residents who emailed instantly saying they too wanted to provide scholarships. So we actually, this summer, have eight spots available um, through outside funding and donations, um, which is, it's just amazing, um, and so wonderful to hear. And I believe we've had um, just six people apply for those scholarships. And then the plan is to formalize our donation and fundraising policy and then a city scholarship uh, policy that would be, the scholarships would be funded through donations. And I also want to extend, my, my dream would be to extend that to be, include swim lessons as well because to get into junior guards, you have to be a, a pretty strong swimmer. And I want to make sure we're providing opportunities for people to learn to swim. And so as they progress, you know, junior guards would be the next step.
Okay. Uh, so here we go. Um, next, we're gonna, we, we, we did with the anal, we analyzed the beach store and the beach services um, accounts. So before we go to the next slide, we wanted to note that this analysis was of fiscal year, like twenty-three, twenty-four, so last year. The beach store was still active on Linden. Hmm. But now that the beach store is demolished, all the revenue and expenses associated with the beach store for the next fiscal year will be coming in from the boathouse on Ash Avenue only. So that's the context. So touching on what I just mentioned, on the left, you see the revenues and expenses coded into the Parks Beach Store account, which includes the revenues and expenses from the Ash Avenue Boathouse, as well as the ones from the store on Linden. Um, twenty-three, uh, twenty-four's year's cost recovery was sixty-one point four percent. You'll see that there on the left. The expenses mainly coming from personnel costs and supplies. The revenues were coming from rentals and the sale of carpentry and merchandise. Um, the beach services account on the right mainly accounts for space rentals of the beach contracts and leases, including vendor leases, like the snowball um, vendor out there and, and then Tai Chi classes, uh, which actually took, took place at multiple places, so not just the beach. So I think they're, uh, Jeanette's wanting to um, change the accounting a little bit to, um, what, what was, what were you going to say on that?
Yeah, so with the Tai Chi, we found it was offered, um, offered at multiple locations, but the funds were going just directly into the beach services. So look, working with admin services, we're gonna um, be able to allocate the funds to the locations where the classes are actually taking place. Um, so just a cleanup item we found while doing this study.
Um, and so just to point out here, uh, the expense is to, from the, uh, for the pro, pro, program manager's time in parks to oversee these rents and leases. So that's the expenses that were allocated to this account. Okay. The next one here is the community garden. So here we're seeing that the community garden has a cost recovery of thirty-two percent, um, with the seven thousand of revenue coming from membership dues and a small amount from um, donations. The twenty-two thousand in expenses were coming from staffing, janitorial services, utilities and supplies. Uh, this lower uh, cost recovery percent, percentage motivated us to see what other cities were charging for their membership dues. So you'll see that on the next here. Uh, we did a survey to see if there might be any room to, to raise the monthly rates from ten dollars uh, to something higher. But after looking at the data, our price per month uh, is higher than the average of cities surveyed. And so in our survey, uh, we didn't consider the sizes of plots um, and garden location, you know, amenities. Uh, however, we did note um, that cities, uh, how, how other cities are managing their program, and Jeanette's going to talk to, talk about that in the next slide.
So here we are recommending implementing a fifty-dollar refundable deposit. This would cover staff time to clear out the garden plot after they have given up the plot. Um, so, so it would cover the staff time if gardeners do not do it themselves. If the gardeners clean out their space when they leave, then the full deposit would be refunded.
Okay. So um, so, so far, we've looked into the Recreation Services Fund. Uh, we went through the majority of the parks' program fees. Um, so the, the Parks Maintenance Fund here is also a place where there are parks-related fees, especially in the area of renting out um, of the sports fields and then the barbecue rentals at various of our uh, Carpinteria parks. The expenses of this park maintenance fund uh, for the last fiscal year was approximately five hundred and ninety thousand. It includes staffing. five hundred and ninety thousand. It includes staffing, uh, contracts for landscaping, et cetera. Uh, revenues uh were two hundred and forty-three thousand, uh, mainly from the Parks Maintenance Tax and from park um rentals. Uh, so regarding the revenue from renting out barbecues for, from our parks, uh, we conducted a survey, gathered information on what other cities are charging uh for their barbecue rentals. Uh, we boiled the costs and calculated uh uh per person rate, per person rates uh to compare to the thirty-four, thirty-five, forty-five dollars we currently charge. Uh, the takeaway from our survey was that our barbecue rate was around fifteen dollars below the average, which is at least some data Jeanette can consider um when changing some rates.
And here we are recommending increasing the overall rental rates for the barbecue picnic areas to forty-five dollars per site per day and removing the jumper permit fee as we now simply just require the renters to use pre-approved vendors, which have already submitted all of their information to the city prior. Um, and only, and we only allow one jumper per park per day. So we're just recommending moving all of the um barbecue sites to that forty-five dollars, a ten-dollar increase. And here you can see our fees uh for our sports fields. Um, our fees are in line with the average, but we are proposing a slight increase to help close the gap from the revenue and expenses. Currently, we do not charge local nonprofit youth groups such as AYSO and Little League for use of the fields, and in return, they do some maintenance and upkeep of those fields. The next phase of this project, if you will, is to engage with those groups to enter into an agreement, which can formalize kind of our understanding and what the practice has been, and discuss the possibility for charging some fees to help cover some of the costs to maintain those fields. So at this time, we would be proposing an increase, and those would just be for um adult and or nonprofit uses of the fields. Twenty-seven percent. And finally, we are proposing some new fees for the skate park. These fees would not apply to our local Carp Skate Foundation, as we have a separate agreement with them that is outside of this um fee study. Uh, this would be if there was any interest in private use of the skate park, you know, perhaps someone is looking to do a photo shoot during the weekday in school, or if someone wanted to reserve the pavilion for a birthday party at the park. And so you could see, these would be all new fees, um, a special event fee, a pavilion fee, and then a refundable deposit fee. And we have here for your council options on how to proceed. Uh, this concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. I have a couple, a couple of questions. Um, so uh, from the staff report, it, I'd seen that um the previous cost of service study that the city did only included some of the Parks Rec and Community Service Department fees. Was there reasoning behind that approach of of not, of not evaluating the park fees?
Yeah, uh, through the mayor, Vice Mayor Solosino, I will turn to our city manager, Michael Ramirez. As I was not here at the time of the previous um cost study, actually, um, interestingly enough, I believe was completed one month before I started with the city. Um, I do know some, as you mentioned, some of the fees were included and some were not.
Uh, Vice Mayor Solosino, through the mayor, and I was also looking over at Lisette, who's been here a little bit longer than myself. My understanding is that there was just a few items, for whatever reason, that had been included on the master fee schedule to begin with. And so those were the items that were included as part of the report. All the other items historically have not been brought to your council for um increase. It's been handled through, at the department level. And so one of the things that we're establishing as part of tonight's meeting is to change that and to make all increases uh related to Parks and Recreation, programming facilities, come through this council, which I think is more best practice. But but your uh question, I think it was just because those other items were not part of the master fee schedule.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the clarification. Um, and then, so I understood also from the staff report that um religious groups use the the Veterans Hall every Sunday, pretty much, and so the public is not able to rent it during that time. Um, I wanted to know if if any, if those groups would be subject to the new uh new updated cost uh fees, or if they would be, get the nonprofit um fee. And and also, I, as kind of a companion question, do we get requests from the community who want to hold events on Sunday? Because it seems like to have the whole, what, half of the weekend blocked off, I'm not sure if that, you know, gets any pushback from the community.
That's through the mayor, Vice Mayor Solosino. Those are good questions. So the church groups do rent on Sunday. There are two, and uh Wednesday and Thursday evenings, uh, pretty consistently. They would be subject to the new fees, the higher fees, but under that nonprofit rate. And I'm happy, we can click back to that if you'd like. It's also in the um attachment to exactly what that rate is. So they would be subject to the nonprofit rate, which we are recommending would be increased. It's the hall-only rate. Um, and to your question about requests for Sunday, in my time here, I haven't received any that I can recall. I'm, and I've thought about that a bit. I'm not certain if that's just because the community knows it's not available. Um, it's my understanding, it's been this way for a long time. Um, so it could be that perhaps people know it's not available, so they don't request it, or I'm not sure. Um, to your point, I could imagine there would be interest because the vets hall is is used quite a bit um by by so many, as you all know.
I wonder, would there be any way to try to get that information? Just, I'm, I'm, it just seems like having it monopolized for for a big part of the weekend, I'm not sure if that was something that maybe the community would want the chance to have that space then. But I I don't know how that would even go forward.
Yes, uh, uh, through the mayor, Vice Mayor Solosino, that's a great question, and definitely something we could look into. Uh, two options um come to mind is, well, one just jumped out of my mind, but one would be, um, I'm working, oh, uh, got it. So I'm working with our recreation leader, Claire, who is our front desk support here at City Hall, on perhaps creating a uh post-event survey, just to see, you know, uh, how we did survey, if you would. So that could be an opportunity where we ask a question, you know, are you, would you have been interested in another day? We could phrase something like that. Another option is I could ask um Claire to just track how many, if any, requests she is receiving, because um I'm so lucky to have her and now Tori, our program manager, handling the rentals. So just because I haven't heard about it doesn't mean it hasn't happened. So I could just ask her to take data on that. So it's something we can analyze in the future, absolutely.
I appreciate that. Um, and then, um, I know that our garden plot rental rates uh were like the highest uh in neighboring areas, but still ten dollars a month seems very low to me. And as a plot renter, I I feel like the 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 market here could bear in, actually, an increase even to maybe fifteen dollars a month. Um, so, and just given that, I don't know what it was like with the other community gardens, but at our garden, you know, we had access, like free access to tools that are stored there on site, you know, water hookups, hoses, and and so, um, and not to mention like all the seating spaces. So I just, I was wondering if that could be something that could be considered. Um, I know it's never fun to raise fees, but at ten dollars a month is, it seems very, very reasonable. And so maybe just a little increase, given all the amenities that come with being a plot holder?
Yeah, absolutely. Through the mayor, Vice Mayor Solosino, uh, with your council direction, we could absolutely do that um this evening, if that's the uh direction provided. And I agree, as I had mentioned earlier, with the survey, um, it is hard to analyze the amenities. And um I do think we just have a fabulous community garden and it has a lot to offer. So I am here what you're saying, and if that's the direction, we can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
A quick question or comment, actually, regarding the Sunday morning, I would say rental and the possibility of that. I would uh say we should be cautious on that. Um, the people that have been there have been there for quite a while. Um, by eliminating that for even one time gives them a hardship, and we may lose that uh on a consistent basis. So um, it would have to be, in my opinion, numbers that we would have to look at seriously if we are gonna make that change, anticipating that we would have the same number of days actually rented.
Yeah, I actually appreciate that comment, because I think I've gone back and forth on this in terms of that Sunday rental. Um, and although it can feel like they're monopolizing it, I also feel like you can also have that same um perspective for like the fields and AYSO and like monopolizing certain. So that's what gives me pause with this. And um, and so, yes, I think it'd be helpful to see who's asking for Sundays, but I I don't know that I'm in a hurry to not have that continue. So.
Yeah, and I think I just would like just more, more information, just to know, because it could be that it wouldn't make sense to make a change from that. Um, but I just, I'm not sure if the church groups are, if they're, if they're all, you know, carpentreans who are using it and who've been used to using it, then that's, that is an important use. But if it's folks, you know, maybe who are from out of town who are using it for those services, I have no idea. But I just want to make sure that the community has as much access to it as possible, given uh that it's, it's such a popular rental space.
And we have to also consider the uh time of that, too. So if it's morning, Sunday morning's usually pretty lax. Afternoons would be where they would be the larger party groups.
And through the mayor, council, um, we, it's definitely something we can analyze. And we, like City Manager Ramirez said, we plan on bringing our fees back to you each year for approval, although um I can't commit to doing a full analysis every year. Uh, this is definitely something we could bring forward. Um, and then to your comment, um, Councilmember Nomura, I just want to clarify that there's two churches on Sunday. So there is a morning and there is an afternoon. Um, because we did look into that and analyze, you know, could we still provide an evening rental? Um, but they rent until pretty late in the day. But absolutely, it's something we'll just keep our eye on and monitor, um, and can report back in the future.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from?
Mostly just a comment, and I just wanted to appreciate that you didn't touch the swim lesson fees. Um, this is the only low-cost swim lessons that are available in our community. And as we're so adjacent to the ocean, it feels very important. And I appreciated that, so I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll go ahead and open up public comment. I do not have any speaker slips. Is there anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Uh, Mayor, we have no raised, oh, we do have one raised hand.
Okay.
Lisa Gervitz, uh, Lisa, go ahead.
Hi there. Thanks for having me. I just wanted to uh kind of respond to the suggestion that we raised, the community garden fees. Um, one of my concerns, or one of the the things I think we should think about is that, I think one of the purposes also was that people with um lower incomes could grow their food and save money on their grocery bills. So I would hesitate to have that be a higher burden for that purpose. So thanks very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll go ahead and close public comment?
Yeah, one more quick comment, um, based on what Lisa just said. Uh, the original intent of that uh garden was actually to get uh it available to residents. Part of the idea of keeping it low cost was that the um people that rented those plots would also put in time as far as working in the, that area itself, cleaning walkways, maintaining tools, uh, doing some of the checkout work as volunteers for that one, too. So that may be something we want to look at to reduce the cost rather than increasing the uh the rental cost, but actually getting more participation to lower the app, operating cost.
Well, and I could, I could speak to that, because I've participated in some of the volunteer days, and there are not big turnouts for it. So I think that even though that is an expectation, when you get a plot that you do, how, it, it's not something that in actuality necessarily happens. And so, and I, I'm definitely sensitive to the idea that people might be growing food. It it looks mostly like it's flowers and stuff, just in going around it. But it, but if that's something, yeah, that that they're doing, I don't know if an increase of five dollars a month would make a big change. And I'm just more, I want to protect kind of the, the maintenance of that community garden, because I saw the cost recovery was, what was it, like twenty-two percent or something? Um, so that's what I'm thinking of. I'm thinking kind of the bigger picture of just make, being able to keep it as, as um, as great of a resource as it is.
When we originally opened it, we had between fifteen and eighteen people on a weekly basis volunteering to clean that. So I don't know what happened, but you know, that was a long time ago.
Yeah, through the mayor, it's my understanding, as as Vice Mayor Solosino said, is that there has been a dip in people that have been volunteering. It's probably because they're not maybe part of the original group that was there. And I think this goes back to the earlier point about considering scholarships and things like that, so that you can charge maybe the appropriate fees, because some of these areas where you might be seeing a low cost, this could be in a high-density, certain area of the city, and that could be a policy decision of the council. And similarly here, uh, depending on what, what it is, the policy goal is, we can make it available for one rate. And then, like we are with maybe swim lessons or things in the future, have scholarship opportunities available. So you're really achieving both goals of hopefully cost recovery and making it accessible to those who need it.
Okay. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll make the motion. Um, I uh move to approve and adopt resolution number sixty-three-eighty-four, updating the Parks Recreation and Community Service Department Program Facility Fee Schedule as set forth at Exhibit One.
Thank you. We have a first and a second?
A second.
Great. First and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your presentation, all the work you all put into this. Uh, next item on our agenda is sixteen, which is Consultant Services Agreement between the City of Carpinteria and Environmental Sciences, Science Associates, ESA, to oversee and prepare environmental review documents for the Surfliner Inn project, for an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So as you were saying, item sixteen is the proposed agreement for consultant services to prepare secret environmental impact report for the Surfliner Inn project. So we circulated an RFP in January, and we received five very strong proposals from firms who specialize in this type of work. And after some internal rating process and follow-up interviews, we are recommending Environmental Science Associates, or ESA, as the selected consultant. So for an agreement such as this one, the city will contract directly with the consulting firm, but the project applicant for the Surfliner project will pay the city for those costs. And the uh contract is set up for two hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety to cover those costs. And with that, staff is available for questions. And I'll also note that Whit Hollis, the project applicant, is here in person if there are any questions of him. And Brian Ali, the project manager from ESA, is available on Zoom if you have any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, just one real quick question, not that it's relevant. Um, ESA, where are they located at and where are they headquartered?
Uh, they have offices all over California. Uh, they have one in Santa Barbara and um Irvine, Camarillo. And and Brian could tell you more.
No, it's fine. Thank you. That's all I know.
Um, yeah, so I saw in the timeline and their proposal that it looks like they're anticipating two public review periods. So like a thirty-day uh review in May or June, and then a forty-five-day public review in December and January. Knowing how, how um invested the community is in this project, can you explain more about what those two review periods entail and why one is a little bit longer than the other?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Solosino. Um, so the first public review period is called the Notice of Preparation Period. And during that thirty days, we are very briefly stating what it is we intend to analyze in the EIR and what topic areas we think will be covered in detail. And we ask the public to comment and say, um, in writing it preferably, and to say what other aspects, even aspects under that, or if there's additional aspects that they think we should cover. And during that time, we'll also have a public meeting where people can ask clarifying questions and we can collect comments. And so that gives us the foundation with ESA to draft the environmental impact report. Um, at that point, using all the public input we've received, we'll draft that public, uh, that uh document with ESA collaboratively. And then um the draft EIR goes out for the forty-five-day public review. And at that point, we ask people to check our work and look at what we've analyzed and let us know if they have further comments. Um, and we do respond to those comments in the final EIR, including any changes that need to be made to the analysis.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yes.
It's, it's worth noting, too, that both of those timelines are, are statutory requirements. So those come straight out of, of state law.
Well, I guess, and kind of related to that, then, um, is, is the outreach to the public to make sure that they're aware of it, is that something that the city does? Or does ESA, ESA do that on their end?
Again, it would be somewhat collaborative. So we uh have our noticing uh protocols that we'll employ, and ESA will also uh give us input on the messaging based on their experience.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate that. It's that, that community outreach seems to be a priority for them in, in their proposal. And so I think that's gonna be really valuable. And so I think that's going to be really valuable.
And to that point, Vice Mayor Solarsino, Mindy is putting together an interested parties list. So as folks reach out to us and inquire about the project or ask to be on the list, we're adding them to a notification list that we can use and blast out when we reach these different milestones. Of course, we'd also do the, the radius noticing around the project footprint, as we would for any other development project. And then we'll, we'll leverage social media and Coastal View News and the other resources that we have available to help get word out there.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I mean, maybe for people that are listening, can you just explain how we decided to go with ESA over the other people?
Certainly, council member, mayor, through the mayor. First, we, so we had a team of three staff that individually and separately reviewed each of the technical proposals without the cost. And we went through and wrote notes, but also rated based on how well they understood the project, how well they understood Carpinteria, the amount of staffing and study that they were showing, the schedule. And so we came up with one rating from that. And then right before we met, we opened the cost proposals and rated the cost based on the quality and combined all that. And then we got together and haggled a little bit and discussed like, well, what did you like better about this or that? And we came up with a top three that were very much similar. And we also then let the applicant know that we were going to talk with three, three of the consultants. We had Zoom meetings with them, asked follow up questions. And, and one of the things with our interview with ESA was they immediately were willing to remove some things that we didn't think would be necessary in the proposal and also add other things. And were just really working with us. And ultimately, we all agreed that we had a really good feeling about them and their experience. And I just want to note, I think we mentioned this in the staff report, that their experience with hotels in the coastal zone was very much a factor, including one mixed use and hospitality project that was right on the train tracks.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, I will go ahead and open up public comment. And Alan Koch.
Again, good evening, everybody. First off, just want to acknowledge the, the city and the staff decision for including within the Surfliner Inn project an environmental impact study. That's great. I, I appreciate that. You know, there, there's like 21 different environmental factors that, to SEQA, I think. That, that comes from SEQA appendix G. And they're, and they're very similar stuff that, that comes up through every single project. The aesthetics, the noise, land use planning, transportation. It's very much, it's, you should read it. I mean, read the attachment. It's, it's a great primer on, on the process. So my first point is, you know, we know this is a complex and contentious development proposal in, in our town, but having a thorough environmental impact report is only going to improve the decision making. So my first point is, I recommend that the council tonight approve the agreement with the environmental science associates. My next point is about transparency. Okay? The stated goals that we have in, in the new strategic plan is, the first goal is to enhance public outreach and education and transparency. So in the spirit of that, the proposal from, from the, from the consultants, they have all these tasks, it's task driven. What I would like to see and recommend is that whenever a task is completed, it's posted and just on the website and distributed. So for instance, the first one is minutes of the meeting on the project initiation and kickoff, which is between the consultants and the staff. Mindy, Nick, and I guess, I guess anybody else that, that the city manager would like to include in that project team. So those minutes should be like minutes of, of, of a ARB meeting or planning committee. They should be posted. A couple of examples there, there, there's going to be a project description that should be posted also. A critical one is task three, which is called SEQA adequacy peer review, where they're going to review all the studies that, that were performed by the applicant, Mr. Hollis in the back, paid for by the applicant. And they're going to do a, a study there to see how that applies to SEQA, to see if we need to do any further studies. So again, transparency, and I think I got my message across there. Lastly, I already been in discussions to email with, with Mindy that this is going to be a big, big study. It's going to take almost a year. My recommendation is that we, we organize it in the way the project is phased in. Phase one being the city developing a new parking lot. And then phase two being the applicant and Surfliner Inn on parking lot three. I think it just makes sense. There's two separate parcels, two separate types of good discussions, and I think it'll be easier for the audience, the community to digest all this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick O'Connor. Come on up. Thank you.
Good guess. Thank you, mayor and council. Sorry, I didn't complete that in advance. Patrick O'Connor, District Five. To that point, I just wanted to offer a couple of questions to think about. In the, in the, in the reviews that we've had in the past, it was pointed out that Amtrak and Union Pacific changes are commensurate with this project along that shared boundary line. So my question is, is the, does the EIS, excuse me, EIR, you know, participate with Amtrak and with Union Pacific? Is there coordination? And the second question is really just a more direct comment from earlier, is Lot Four included in this EIR or is it separate? Thank you.
Thank you. No other sleepy, no other speaker slips? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do, mayor. We have Emreta Psalm. Emreta, go ahead. Emreta, you want to unmute yourself?
Okay, thank you. Emreta Psalm in Carpinteria. I had two questions. One, is it possible that the date for that first meeting and for the NOP can be given long in advance to when it happens so people can plan to be there and get as much information as they can? Or also the deadline for when the comments from the community should be submitted? And the second point is that one of the parking studies, there were two parking studies done. One of those parking studies was done during a low use period. And I think that they need to reconsider many factors like the new shopping area, you know, Lincoln Square and, you know, the Palms and other things that are happening in the community when they consider the parking usage. So I think that one of those studies are not really relevant to the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else, Brian?
And mayor, that concludes Zoom comment.
Great. Thank you. And this question is for staff following Patrick O'Connor's comments. Is there any information in terms of the EIR, EIR in coordination with the railroad? And if Lot Four is included?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Lot Four is going to be part of the project that is analyzed as well as in all alternatives in the EIR. And then, yes, we are already coordinating with Amtrak. We've had a lot of really good conversations looking at what they're proposing and how it overlaps with what's already in the site plans for the Surfliner. And so we'll continue to coordinate with them, also ask them to review the EIR and give input. So that coordination will continue throughout.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council?
May I just ask a question that is possibly a green question as in new? So because we just saw that the Chevron decommissioning EIR is done and on the website. What I, my understanding of an EIR is that the company would go out and do all of the broad scope of work and that it's not something that they're continuously feeding us back information as a city, but more so like because they're a contractor, they're putting together the whole report and then delivering us the whole report, which I guess my question is sort of coming from some of the questions, which was like, how do we keep on, how do we keep transparency? But isn't that, is that the process of an EIR? Am I, do I have that right?
Yes, thank you, council member, mayor. Yes, the reason that under state law, we have these specific public review and public disclosure points is because in between those points, there's, it's very fluid and we'll be collaborating with, in this case, ESA, making sure that they're capturing all of our coastal policies, making sure that we're all capturing all the stakeholder inputs. And so it's not as, it's not a discrete number of deliverables the way it's shown in a proposal. They have to do that for cost purposes. But ultimately, they, they will work with us to put together what we think is going to be accurate information that will then get provided to the public and stakeholders such as yourself. And then we can get input during those times. And then when we put out, for instance, you mentioned the Chevron one, we will put out the final EIR where we have addressed everyone's comments and, and then put together a recommendation at the end. Jenna, would you like to add to that?
Thank you, Mindy. Council member, mayor, through the mayor. So just adding on kind of what some of those review periods that Mindy was starting to touch on, there are several of those also written into the statute, so written into SEQA, which we will follow. There's an initial study. There will then be a draft EIR and a final EIR. So for the initial study, Mindy, you may have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that there's a 30 day period. Once the initial study is posted, is made public. Notice of preparation? Okay. And that's where the 30 day period comes in. And then there's a 45 day period once the draft EIR is posted and made public. There's a 45 day period where members of the public, all interested parties can comment, review the draft EIR and provide their comments on that draft. And so that's something that we will provide those notices, will comply with the law and post those notices. And there will be that 45 day period. And then those comments, as Mindy was saying, will be taken into account. They will be addressed, they'll be responded to, may be incorporated into the final EIR. And then there will also be a chance for members of the public and other interested parties to comment on the final EIR at, I think, both the, yeah, at the planning commission. And so that's when they would be able to come and provide additional comments. And that will be a public hearing. It will be subject to the Brown Act, so there will be notice for that as well.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, quick question, actually. In full transparency, I was going to ask the council and city council if it'd be okay if we heard from the applicant.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that. Yeah, absolutely.
Good evening. It's been a long process, as you all know, and we look forward to this review and having the objective study so that the planning commission can then make its findings and approval. And whether or not your council will hear it on appeal, I guess we'll, we'll see. But we welcome it and I know your staff is going to do a really good job on it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for consultant services with environmental science associations to oversee and prepare environmental review documents for the Surfliner Inn project for an amount not to exceed $258,890.
A second.
Great. We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Nomura?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Solarsino?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember mayor?
Aye.
And Mayor Alakon?
Aye. The next item on our agenda is a legislative update.
Apologies, having a sidebar there. Yes, I do have a legislative update for this evening. So as you'll note in the agenda packet, we did include the CalCities update, which provided summaries of a wide array of bills currently moving through the state legislature. But tonight, we're just going to focus on three key bills that we will summarize and then provide a recommendation for your council to consider whether or not to support or oppose. So the first bill that I want to discuss this evening is Assembly Bill or AB 306. So this bill imposes or would impose, if adopted, a six year pause, so from June 1st, 2025 to June 1st, 2031, on new state building standards and local modifications affecting residential units with limited exceptions for emergency, health and safety, home hardening and specific legislative directives. So the bill aims to reduce, the goal of the bill is to reduce delays and redesigns in housing projects, especially in wildfire recovery areas by providing more regulatory certainty to developers to move through the process. The author of the bill argues that while California's codes are already highly efficient, continued tightening just adds to the construction costs and worsens, worsens the housing crisis with minimal greenhouse gas reduction benefits. So if passed, this bill risks preventing the city from adopting code updates to address earthquake risk, flooding, energy costs and other environmental protections. We, in our opinion, you know, some of these codes, these code updates may have more of an impact on the City of Carpinteria and may be more important because of our geographic location. So our, I guess, soft recommendation is to sign an opposition letter in response to this bill.
Can I ask a quick question?
No problem.
What page is that, is that bill on?
Page, where, where are you, where are you reading? Are you reading from anything?
I'm reading from my own notes.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it's in terms of...
That explains a lot.
Oh, so it's, it's not in the attachment?
No, it's, the bill is, it probably has a one line summary there. I'm reading from notes that I drafted summarizing them, which I looked into some additional information. So what you have in your packet is really just a long list of kind of all of the bills that CalCities is following, right? So I think there's probably a one liner in there.
I don't even think it's mentioned at all.
AB 306?
No, it's not.
That would be quite surprising. I can check that afterwards as well, but I think it should be so if you...
Oh, I don't know.
AB... AB 306. You may be right.
I'm right.
I like the commentary. Apologies, I do not see it in there as well. So in just a little bit of background for how we put this list together, we used what the CalCities provided to Brian. And then also, Michael had forwarded us some bills that he had gotten information on that he... he thought may be of interest to the council. So that may be why this bill that we've chosen to summarize is not included in this list. I am quite surprised and I will, I kind of want to check that there. But I'm surprised that CalCities is not included in the update.
Real quick, would it be possible, Mayor, if we went item by item, take action on those instead of coming back for a second summary on all of the points? In other words, she's presented one, it's not in here for a review, but maybe make recommendation per item?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. So make a motion for each of those?
Exactly.
Yeah.
With that in mind, we may want to open for public comment prior to making the motion, too.
So we're going to have three public comment periods here.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open up public comment for legislation or Bill AB 306. No speaker slips, anyone on Zoom, Brian?
Mayor, we have no raised hands.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
So moved.
I would second that, I would move the letter forward.
Great. First and a second for an opposition letter. Would this require a voice vote or roll call?
Voice vote would suffice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Great, so I will move, I will, Vice Mayor Solarsano, you are correct. AB 306 does not, I did just search this document.
I knew it was, thanks, Brandon.
It does not appear, so I assume it was one of the bills forwarded by Michael that he wanted us to include, that he thought would be of interest to the, to the council. And so the second bill is Senate Bill or SB 79. And this bill, as proposed, would establish state zoning standards around train stations and major bus stops, or bus rapid transit stops, which, as you'll recall, we believe as currently written into law, that our train station, our Amtrak station, would constitute one of those, or would, would trigger this requirement. So it would establish state zoning standards around these train stations, like the Amtrak, that would allow for multifamily homes up to seven stories near immediately surrounding major transit, transit stops with lower height standards extending up to a mile, half a mile away from such stops. So it would streamline the permitting for homes built within a half a mile of these major public transit stops, and then also allow local transit agencies to develop at the same or an even greater density on land that they own within these areas. CalCities unsurprisingly has strongly opposed this bill and urged cities to submit opposition letters. So given that this bill would reduce city land use discretion and may allow for the approval of projects that exceed existing development standards, we more strongly recommend signing an opposition letter in response to this pending legislation.
Any questions? Nope. All right, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. No speaker slips, anyone on Zoom, Brian?
There we have, no raised hands.
Hey, I'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back for a motion.
I move that we'd send and oppose a letter on that bill. Aye, second.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Great, the third and last bill that I'll be summarizing this evening is Senate Bill 346. So it would require short-term rental facilitators, such as Airbnb and other online entities, at the request of the city, at the request of a city, to provide a listings APN or assessor's, assessor parcel number to the requesting city. It would also give cities the ability to audit transit, transient occupancy tax collected and remitted by short-term rental facilitators, and require platforms to publish the local license number and TOT certificate, sort of, certificate on the short-term rental license, listings. So this bill, sorry, this bill is sponsored by CalCities in an effort to help cities better enforce their short-term rental ordinances and collect all of the TOT that they're owed. And so we also recommend that the city support this bill and send in a letter in support.
I had a quick question about that one. Is that an issue that we have here in terms of being able to, to get the TOT and to, you know, to, would we want the, do we not have a listing of the assessor parcel number for these properties?
So Vice Mayor Solarsano through the Mayor, so it's kind of an interesting issue. So we have the address and the APN for all properties that go through the city's process to get a license, right? But the issue is that there are often bad actors, so there are often properties and property owners who try to rent their property out as a short-term rental without having a license, because in the city of Carpinteria, we have a cap on the licenses that we issue. So as I understand it, this bill would allow cities a tool to enforce those, enforce against or learn about and then enforce against those properties and those property owners that may not have licenses. So we would get contact information from them and we would know that they are, you know, operating in violation of our short-term rental ordinance.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, okay. Go ahead and open up public comment. No speaker slips, anyone on Zoom?
No one on Zoom.
I'll go ahead and close public comment.
Second.
All right, first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. And just a quick note, I'm happy to provide summaries of additional bills as well, if there are certain things that, you know, once the agenda comes out, you see a bill in the legislative section that you would particularly like a summary on, I'm happy to provide that as well. I personally thought it may be a little time-consuming to kind of run through all of those bills, and so we try to pick, you know, an easy number of bills to present to the council, but happy to do additional bills, too, if you all would like.
Yeah, I think one thing that would be helpful is maybe if you could let us know which, what the recommendations are going to be, like which bills you're going to provide recommendations for, because this was, you know, a six-page document. And so like, I, you know, went through all of them and I, I did notes on some of them, but then not necessarily the ones that you brought up. So I'd love to be able to do, make sure I do a deep dive into the ones that you're specifically going to recommend, us, support or oppose, if that's, if that's okay.
No problem, Vice Mayor Solarsano through the Mayor. And if you would like to provide me with some of those notes, we can present on those at the next meeting as well, because there may be bills, as you went through them, that you're interested in, and interested in hearing more about, so.
Thank you.
By the way, I appreciate the current system, the previous system, one that our former City Manager did was read each one of those. So we got a presentation on every bill that was being submitted. It was a tough one. It's definitely saved time.
Especially at the end of the meeting, yeah.
Great, okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda are the committee reports, inquiries, and other matters presented by council members.
So I can report that the South Coast Youth Safety Partnership met this morning here in the chambers. And they discussed, one thing that they discussed that I thought was particularly interesting is they're planning on doing a community conversation in CARP. I think they were thinking maybe in the fall, so when the school year is about to start. So I'll definitely keep everybody updated on that. But we've been doing these community engagement team meetings quarterly, but this would be more of an event that they would see inviting, you know, the wider community into. So I thought that was a really nice idea. And then the Public Engagement Committee is going to have our first meeting on April 21st at 4:00 PM. So, wanted to give those reports.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Attendance of council members for future meetings, everyone will be there?
Yes.
Excellent. And we will now break out into closed session. For public employee performance evaluation.
Well, I'm sure wishing we'd done this before the meeting.
I know.
Thank you, council members. At this time, we can adjourn into closed session for public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1 for the City Manager, Michael Ramirez.
Thank you.
Thank you.